disappears for about four or five hours.
I still don't see how they do it, though. I mean, even if you're like.
Bob, you want your regular spot back?
Oh, okay.
Like, you waste the whole weekend.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, this weekend.
Okay. Well, how are you? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you.
Yeah.
How are you doing? I saw you white the other day.
Yeah.
We're at Welch's?
Yeah.
Mike invited me. They never fooled us enough to, I guess, when he was with Cuttingwood.
Happy New Year to all.
Let's go.
You're quiet all of a sudden.
Right, all right.
Ready.
Left and right?
Ready.
Okay, it's seven thirty. We'll call the meeting of the Situate Planning Board to order. It is January tenth. Need a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Super, thank you. Happy New Year. Welcome back. First item on the agenda is the update from the Economic Development Commission.
Well, that's us.
That's you guys.
Hi, guys. I'm Chris McConaughey. I'm serving as the Acting Chairman of the EDC. This is Victor Milligan, one of our board members. We may have a couple of other people joining us. We'll see. I believe as part of our charter, we owe you an update to keep you apprised of our progress over time. I think it's been about a year and a half coming on two years that we've been active as a group. So what I wanted to do tonight is go over three things. And you should each have a packet of three pieces of information. One is a summary of the survey that the EDC conducted this past spring. And so I'll go over that and feature some of the high-level takeaways from that activity that went out to both residents and local businesses. Secondly, I thought it would be helpful to share some information about an MAPC proposal for some, for a study related to economic development in the town that we're working through with the help of Laura Harbottle and the folks at the MAPC. And then the third thing I wanted to cover tonight is the 2014 budget proposal, which we've submitted to the town. And preliminarily reviewed with Patricia Vincessi, the Town Administrator, and subsequently we'll be reviewing with the Advisory Committee and also the Board of Selectmen. And I think that will give you a good sense of some of the accomplishments that we achieved in 2012. It also will outline our goals and objectives for 2014 and it give you a sense of the scope of work and the budget that we've requested and are working through. Okay? Any questions at this point? Okay, so let's, we'll fire through this. I think we have about a half an hour and I think that should be about right. It seems like old news, but it's probably new news for you, this economic development study that we that we put together in the spring. And so that's the document, Town of Situate Economic Development Commission. Basically, we included the mission statement on the first slide, and then just to give you a little bit of background on the scope of this survey that we conducted. What we were hoping to do with this survey is accomplish a few things. One is really use this as one of the first opportunities for the EDC to gather data to help guide our direction regarding the most effective means of meeting our mission, which is, you know, to help generate new forms of revenue for the town. We wanted to get a better sense of what's working well, you know, among, in the opinions of the residents and also the businesses. And what's not maybe working so well as it applies to existing businesses right now. Create a baseline of data today that we can then go back and potentially revisit over time and see how some of these data points change. Hopefully for the better, if not perhaps for the worst, over time. And also provide an opportunity for the town to be heard. And I think that, you know, there are a number of people who may be aware of the EDC and this economic development thing and then not have heard from us. So this was really the first effort that we undertook to have a more public presence in the town. The way we did this is we created the survey. We based it on some economic development surveys that we were able to compile from some other towns. We created it in Survey Monkey, which is the same tool that the Pier Forty-four group used to create their survey. We leveraged input from the Town Administrator and also the Board of Selectmen reviewed both of the surveys. And so just to be clear, we created two surveys, one targeted to residents and one to businesses in town. And then we linked those surveys to some school and town websites to promote it. We also, I believe, had an article in some of the local newspapers and media to promote it. An article in the Situate Mariner. And at the end of the day, on the residential side, we had 684 responses. Which we thought was pretty good. It was not as high as Pier Forty-four, but we thought it was a pretty positive response. The response from the businesses was quite a bit less. We had a total of 54 responses. And importantly, among the businesses, a number of those responses were incomplete. So of those 54, a significant number of them only completed parts of the survey.
Were those 54 from businesses or from individuals? Or are you able to separate out? You know, was one business allowed one response, or is it just business people? Fifty-four business people? Is there any way to track?
Well, it was anonymous.
Okay, so there isn't really a way to track.
So I don't think so.
About like how many businesses there are in Situate. Like if you heard from all the businesses in Situate, what type of numbers would you expect to get back on the survey?
Yeah, and that's a good question. And I don't know offhand the total number of businesses in Situate, or even if that's a number that is easily obtainable. What was more important to us is the fact that so few of the surveys were complete.
How were the businesses notified? Was it separately?
The same way.
It was the same way?
Through the same channels.
So it was up to, like if I owned Richard Taylor Corporation on Front Street, it was up to me to go make sure that I did the business one?
You got that big stone building down the end of the street?
Yeah.
The ugly red one in the middle.
Not the ugly red one.
I think the level of response is kind of telling in certain ways. You know, you can read some things into that, I guess.
You could. You certainly could. And I, you know, I think we did.
Maybe we need more businesses, for one. And two, maybe there's not a cohesion in the business community.
Engagement, the method of engagement needs to change if they are participants in economic development.
Yeah.
Because they are detached from the process.
Right.
Detached from the outcome. And that's a reasonable conclusion one can draw from the nature of the results.
Yeah, I think so. And that's a group we really wanted to hear from.
Yeah, and so as you will hear, certainly an obvious next step for us is that we need to find other ways to engage the local business community. And that's one of the things that you'll see as part of our 2014 plan.
If I could speak to that just quickly, I am a local business guy. And I talk with, you know, my colleagues from time to time, and there's an ongoing theme of discontent with the idea of what our town is doing and so forth. And many of them are unaware of the activities of the Economic Development Commission altogether. And so, you know, I applaud your efforts to try and engage in new and better ways. And there are people that are literally crying for your assistance.
Well, let's
Yeah, we need to get that information. I mean, I think what we've been trying to do is to get to those groups that are already formed, whether it be in North Situate or what have you. There's already a body that's formed. So we can hit, you know, one meeting can hit many people and get a little bit more of what you're describing, which is a ground-level view of what is that discontent?
Mm-hmm.
What are the aspirations? And what do they see as methods to, you know, resolve it within the existing real estate and whatever builds that would come and talk about. So
Okay.
There's a lack of, there's a unnecessary lack of communication between the EDC and the business. They're a targeted group for this year.
Absolutely, yes.
Just curious, before the survey went out, did any representative from the EDC go and meet with the harbor merchants or the Chamber of Commerce to just kind of promote the survey, basically?
Well, we had met with them in different forms, not specifically for the survey itself.
Okay.
So as a result of those findings, what we did is we moved forward in compiling the results for the residential survey. And not the business survey. We didn't feel that it was even directionally valuable at this point. And again, as I just said, our conclusion is we need to find other ways to reach out to the business community. Because we really do want to get that insight. So what we're going to go through right now are the, kind of the main themes and learnings from the residents from the residential survey. Okay? So moving forward, really kind of the high-level themes. Our interpretation is that, and we'll go through each of the questions a little bit, in a little bit more detail. But basically, what we found is, number one, the majority of the residential responses indicate that they're in favor of expanding our business base in the town, and also feel that we need an increase in the variety of businesses. Number two, one of the main reasons people shop outside of Situate is because the specific store that they want is not offered here. So it's not that they're doing it by choice, it's by necessity. Some of the top choices for types of new businesses are a good, quote, "good grocery store" or "health food store" or "takeout". And recreational facilities like pools and fields were also mentioned. Now, we did get a fair number of kind of write-in comments, and we'll go over those in a minute. One of the things that I want to just point out is that as an Economic Development Commission, one of the things that we need to do with things like this survey will ultimately kind of weigh these responses as they apply to economic development potential for the town. So ball fields and pools and those kinds of things may be great resources that the town wants and may be valuable for a lot of reasons. I don't know if one of those reasons is actually economic development and revenue generation. So just keep that in mind as we go through some of these things. There are some things in here that you might scratch your head at and say, hmm, I'm not sure how that applies to economic development, and we may agree.
Just an editorial comment, having run all of the state pool system. Pools are not an economic development activity.
Right.
They are. They're just a negative economic. Still an activity.
Exactly.
The, let me build on that point for a second. So if we were to take on, Chris, we'll talk a little bit about the sort of three-plus-one plan we have for 2013. If we were to take on anything that's sizable or formidable, the town needs to rally around it. The residences would need to rally around it. They would need to accept a change, a level of change, to support economic development. And what we learned in the survey was, many of the people that responded had a loose understanding of what we were talking about in terms of economic development. They might have seen it as a strip mall. They might have seen it as bringing in any business. They might have seen it as any land development irrespective of what that means to revenue to the town. So it does tell us that if the town, not just the EDC, but the town wishes to embark in these efforts, there's going to be, need a major education program to support it in advance. Because you want to make sure people can make an informed decision, and you want to make sure people understand the financial consequences of change. If there's, if we're going to build out on 3A or build out wherever we would build out.
Or of no change, which is where we started.
Or no change is a very comfortable de facto position.
Yeah.
Yep, so.
But I think my point is, you know, you look at the consequences of no change, that when we started this committee over the course of the ten years on the slide that Situate's been on in terms of the residential burden of the taxes going up and the commercial contribution going down and the total revenue stream to the town and, you know, the consequences of doing nothing are, we're all feeling that with all the overrides and
Yep.
So I think that's part of the education as well as that, you know, the option to just stay where we're at is not really sustainable over the long term.
Right, exactly.
And to use an example, I mean, whether you're positive or negative toward it, I think the idea, the talking about the facilities and the idea of maybe doing, moving Town Hall to Gates and the whole Gates study. I mean, I think that's been done well as far as educational-wise, like really getting out there, having articles in the Mariner, people, you know, talking about it at Town Hall and at, you know, Town Meeting. So whether it's positive or negative, there's certainly been a lot of buzz about it. I think the information out there's been really good. So it's probably going to have to be something like that where it's really well-informed.
I think too is that, you know, one of the things that we talked about a little bit when we went through the interview process with you all is the idea that a certain number of commercial square feet in terms of the tax revenue that generates corresponds with so many teachers that we can afford to hire for the schools.
Right.
And so I think if we put it in those kinds of terms, and people begin to realize, well, this is money I'm spending anyway. I'm just spending it in another town. But if I spend it in my town, then I get a teacher besides what I'm buying.
Right.
And each dollar we derive from increased commercial activity is one less dollar that goes on the residential tax burden. So I think there has to be an education piece around that because I think a lot of the attitude is, you know, why change anything? But you can see the consequences of that in our disrepairing roads and lack of recreational facilities and overrides. And, you know, I think it's definitely the long-term view. There's no quick fix for it. But if you look at some of the capital planning the town's doing right now, and what you can anticipate that's going to do to raising taxes.
It almost assumes economic development is underlying that capital spend.
It's going to have to, otherwise things aren't going to get passed. And I think, you know, I think the town needs to start investing as much time in revenue generation as it is in spending, frankly.
So one thing that at least I observe is that economic development is sort of, it can emanate out of this commission, which is fine. But it's a town activity. It's not a EDC-exclusive activity. And we all, whether it's you guys or us or others, speak on behalf of the town. And there, we need to get away from this concept of economic development equals a strip mall. And that was in the papers pretty heavily from our town officials last year. Signerly relating economic activity to strip malls. That's not true. It's the commercial use of real estate that drives real estate taxes as the revenue. That could be a business bark. That could be a number of different things that are different than tearing down trees and putting in a bunch of strip malls. And I think we needed, that negative education was not helpful, and we need to repair that as well.
Okay, so let's get through, so I mean, really that is kind of the high level. We'll go through some high-level themes and we can give a little bit more a little bit more information on the specific results by question. And then for anybody who wants to dig into this in detail, all of the kind of raw data is on the EDC page of the town website. So we talked about the overview, the main themes. Economic development is tied to the quality of life. Seventy-one percent rated Situate good or excellent overall. A lot of people choose Situate because it's a safe community, because of its educational reputation. That's interesting. We were just talking about that because that's really what's at risk right now. And one of the reasons for the facility studies is because we have had an excellent educational reputation. But that's, you know, that's in jeopardy. And to that point, the school buildings were noted as the number-one weakness by a majority respondents. The majority favor expanding our business base. As I mentioned, we need, in the opinion of a majority of the residents, we need to increase both the number and the variety of businesses. Some of the data supporting that, eighty percent, eighty-point-one percent feel we need to expand the town business base. Fifty-nine-point-eight percent, almost sixty percent, said that our existing variety, they rated it as poor or fair. Sixty-five percent said that the number of businesses that we have in town are rated as poor or fair. And fifty-five-point-five percent said that the quality is good. So just a little over half. But, you know, finding the right fit is essential. People shop, as I said, outside Situate because the specific store they want is not offered here. We talked about the kinds of things that they pointed to, the recreational fields and facilities. Health food stores, groceries were noted. That's a challenge because we have an awful lot of them right around us. And that's one of the threats that I think we face. And one of the reasons that we have to move quickly as an organization and as a town is because we're getting boxed in. And pretty soon, you know, our little position on a peninsula such as it is, is going to give us you know, very little recourse if we wait for everybody else to put, I just noted that, you know, there's a car wash going in right on the town border, which is, somebody came up to me the other day, said, you know, we should have a car wash in town. That would be great. And, you know, whoops, maybe too late. Hotels and Inns were pointed, grocery stores. The focus for economic development was in order the harbor. Was that in order? Let me just check my notes. I'm working off of a couple of different documents. So pardon?
Three A is the first.
Yeah, well, 3A is the priority. The first choice, twenty-one percent was in the harbor. Then 3A between Booth Hill and the Cohasset Line was ranked next at twenty percent. North Situate was fifteen percent. And then First Parish to Booth Hill was kind of the second choice. So the first choices were the harbor, Booth Hill to the Cohasset Line, and then North Situate.
I can't remember. Was that, that was a multiple-choice question, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
And you had Hammerock there, and you also had like Green Bush to
Yes.
The Rotary to
Yes.
The Bridge, I think, or to 3A?
Right. Right.
So they answered it without understanding, without us clarifying what the opportunity was or what our plans were. They answered it without really background information.
Yeah.
So we were just trying to get a gauge of their appetite.
Get up towards Booth Hill. Well, that's, yeah, beyond that point, right.
But I think the low-hanging fruit everybody points to immediately, 3A. And I don't know that as a commission, we're ready to say 3A is the place to go. One of the things that we want to talk about next is this MAPC proposal that we have. And one of the things, one of the objectives there is to really get a better sense for, okay, but from an economic development standpoint, where are the opportunities? So we are certain, so again, this is kind of a point in time. This is, you know, directional and influential for us, but we're not prepared to make decisions out of this for a variety of reasons. One is, you know, ultimately the response is, you know, there's not a mandate here that we say, oh, this gives us the blueprint that we need. It gives us another point of reference.
Did you say we could actually go online and look at every comment that people wrote in?
Yes.
Okay.
And so we have a page on the town website. And on that economic development page are links to the residential and business surveys.
Okay.
Okay? One of the questions that we asked, question eight of our survey, had to do with the local meals tax. Would you be in favor of Situate establishing a point-seven-five percent local option meals excise tax? That question also provided a little bit of background information as far as, you know, where that tax is from. The fact that it's set by the state, that the money comes back to the town. That state audits have estimated that nearly $200,000 in revenue could be generated from that tax annually. And that it represent, it would represent a seventy, you know, a seventy-five cent incremental charge on a hundred-dollar payment. And sixty-six-point-three percent of the respondents were in favor of the local meals excise tax in the survey.
And it's been adopted by most of the communities around us already. It's been in effect and hanging on for two years. And there's, you know, there's no evidence to suggest that would hurt any business. In fact, it's becoming sort of standardized, especially as towns get squeezed for revenue. And I think about, roughly over half the communities in the state have it right now, and it's going up every year significantly. So it's not really a a burden on business or anything like that. It's just an additional source of revenue and
It's going to be a pretty inelastic and progressive feat.
It really is.
Bearing on the patronage that takes place and the spend that takes place.
In a town like Situate in particular can benefit from that more than a lot of communities because we have such an increase of tourists and things in the summer.
Right.
That's when a lot of the meals tax would be generated by actually by out-of-town visitors and things like that. So we and the state actually has charts that shows what the town would receive in revenues every year. You can go on, and we would have gotten, I think it's a hundred-and-ninety-something thousand last year, or a hundred, it's roughly 200,000 a year.
So do we need to apply somewhere for permission to do that?
It's already on the Selectmen's agenda, I believe.
A group of us got together, and you're going to talk about that more, and we got a petition together and put it on the ballot. So it's actually on the April Town Warrant. But I'll let you guys go ahead and
Well, yeah, no, we can talk about that right now. It's also a topic in our 2014 budget. As one of our goals and objectives is to have that meals tax passed. That's looking forward, looking backwards. In 2002, that was also a focus that we've been working with the Board of Selectmen on. To us, it seems like low-hanging fruit. I should say that, again, the results from the business community were very, very small. Their enthusiasm for the meals tax when the survey was conducted was not as high. So you do have a difference between the residential response and the business response. But we have submitted a, an article, requested an article for the warrant that that would put the meals tax up for vote, number one, and number two, would further specify that the revenue generated from the meals tax would go towards economic development. And the logic there, from our perspective, really, is that, I mean, if you turn that into an investable asset, you have, you know, roughly $200,000 a year that could maybe over time begin to make more money for the town rather than just putting it into a general fund, you know, where it's just spent on whatever. So we look at it as an investable asset and feel that by specifying that it be used for economic development, which is a broad term, it can be used in a lot of different ways, that we actually maybe could, you know, ultimately over time, generate more revenue from that money. So that has been proposed, and we'll see over time where that goes.
And I think that's a lot of the thought that went into it was that if you earmark it to go back into the businesses and back into the business community and towards revenue versus just putting it into the general fund. I'm personally not in favor of raising taxes if it just goes to general revenues unless there's a specific need for it. But something like this, like we mentioned, if the town spent as much time focusing on how to generate more revenue as it seems to be spending on how to spend money on these large capital projects, we'd be a lot further along and would lessen the burden. I mean, if you look at just, looking at the next, you know, twenty years, that some of the bonds are going to have to be floated for things like Gates School and things like that. And you look at the average taxes, what they're going to go up if that goes through. It's a significant tax burden the town's going to be looking at over twenty or thirty years. I think we need to start making some headway on the commercial development and finding some new revenue streams because the state revenue's going down each year. And that's not expected to go up anytime soon. So this, like Chris said, this is an investable asset. The town takes this money, puts it in a stabilization fund, reinvests it in the town, finds a way to increase the commercial property tax base. Can be used from, everything from improving the harbor to attracting businesses to, you know, helping the existing businesses compete better and market together. So I'm very excited about it, as you can tell.
Last point's a really important point because a lot of people think of economic development as a net new business coming in. It also means driving up the economic activity of the existing businesses and supporting their abilities to compete. Whether that's competing for restaurants or competing for tourism, whatever it's competing for. And marketing the town because all of the influx of people coming in, whether that's off-season or on-season, represents revenue for the businesses and property value. I mean, all those things happen. So this is a fairly meaningful investment that the town making on behalf of the town and the existing businesses. We're hoping, back to the business survey, that we, or better stated, we need to inform the existing businesses of that benefit. I think that they saw that as supporting net new businesses, and we need to clarify that relationship between
Right.
the existing businesses and economic activity.
And this is one of the things I think when they learn about it, they're going to support because, you know, typically you do an override for schools or for town budgets or things like this. This is one that is for the business community. So you know, in theory, over the long term, it's going to benefit them.
Right.
And also, the mechanism is it goes into a stabilization fund is the way it would be set up. So that it's not like it's carte blanche for EDC or the Selectmen or anybody to go spend the money. It's sort of locked up in the stabilization fund, and then it would be subject to an annual appropriation through Town Meeting. So people like the EDC would have to make a case for it every year. Here's our plan for what we'd like to do with this money. And wouldn't necessarily get spent every year.
Right.
You could accumulate it for large projects down the road.
From an economic development perspective, how well do you think the Economic Development Committee or Council understands sort of the business dynamics in the area? Because it's one thing to say, well, we'll try to develop a strip mall or a good grocery store, whatever it is. It's all driven by the demand for those products and services. And it seems to me we need to make sure we understand that in order to really drive. Because even right now, a lot of these businesses, particularly this time of year, are in pretty tough shape.
Right.
They really rely on the summer, sort of the summer period in a lot of ways.
That's a good segue into your MAPC.
Yeah, I was just going to say, and the MAPC thing is
I was paid to do that.
Yeah. Similar to the Georgetown? Was it the EDC that brought the Georgetown, the example that we went, okay, so
Laura, I think.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so that, basically, from that, at least from the Georgetown example that we saw, the report identifies businesses, what is needed, what's there, you know, all kinds of things like that.
And just to close on the survey, the deck that you have has And just to close on the survey, the, the deck that you have has some next steps. Those have basi- basically been incorporated into our 2014 plan. So, I'll talk about those in a little bit more detail because it really is a good segue. The, the answer to your question is, um, you know, I don't think we have a really good sense or a lot of confidence that as an Economic Development Commission, we're at a, in a position to say with confidence, you know, here's where we should develop, and these are the kinds of businesses that we should bring in because we have data that indicates that, you know, our town or this region can support that business. Uh, here's how we, you know, here's how we envision incorporating any, you know, new businesses with our existing business base, all that stuff. So, uh, with Laura's help, we have made contact with the MAPC, which is the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and have been working on a proposal with them to do just that. Basically, proposing economic, a, a project that would identify the types of business uses that could be supported by local and regional demographics, where they should be located, and what, if any, local changes should be advanced in order to take advantage of the opportunities that they would identify. So, um,
And this study would be done through consultant of some kind?
Uh, the MAPC would actually field a lot of this. In some cases, they have, uh, third party consultants that they would manage on our behalf to, uh, to do the research and the analysis.
And Stephen, since you're a little new to this, we actually, uh, did a budget request last year for the same type of thing, and were turned down. But we spent a lot of time looking at what other towns had done, similar to Situate, the types of studies they did, um, talked to the MAPC, got, you know, bids and numbers and all of that, and spent a lot of time on that. And I know, see Colin sitting there, and, and, you know, he's had a lot of experience. You were a director, right, at, uh, Director of Economic Development at, uh,
LoL.
LoL, okay. So, we have some real expertise on the EDC about how these things work and what the next steps are and what types of information. But I think you need to sort of have the metrics in place to say, if we rezone an area or if we allow this use, will it come? A perfect example is Cohasset. When you're on 3A and you're going, um, towards Boston, I guess you go past where the new apartment complex is, and you go a little ways further across from the train station, there's all that wooded area. They rezone that whole area down there for this, I think it's like called a, uh, Technology District or something like that. They thought if they rezoned all this land, that all of a sudden, the businesses would appear. Well, it turns out those businesses don't want to locate here.
Right.
So, it was sort of a, somewhat of a wasted effort. You don't want to, you want to find out what businesses would actually come here, and also, what's the kind of the lowest impact on the town to maintain our character and all of that. So, this is the type of information that MAPC would produce for us to say, here's what would be interested if you had the right conditions and would be the lowest impact and generate the most revenue and
An important consideration is that it's not simply unlocking the knowledge that exists in our, in the business base. It's, because they're competing for, um, dollars that are spent in Cohasset and Hangham and otherwise. It's looking at a regional view to find out how well do we, how, where can we compete as a town effectively, with your point, so we don't take on an effort that really doesn't bear, bear fruit. So, what we're hoping is that it informs us, it may tell us things that the business already knows, and so we can rally around it. It also gives the business insights to allow them to compete better.
And there are a couple of different ways that we can, uh, you know, accomplish this. We have, we haven't selected the MAPC, but we're recommending the MAPC really for two reasons. One is because they do have that regional expertise. And the bandwidth to both, you know, field this study and manage those third party providers that we on the EDC probably could not do as well. But also, uh, really importantly, they have access to, um, to a potential grant from the D L T A of fifteen thousand dollars that could help offset this cost. We applied for that grant last year and did not receive it. Um, we have a contact that we've been working very closely with at the MAPC who, uh, who wants to, to go for that grant this year. And Laura, I think you mentioned that we also applied a couple of years ago. Uh, but I, I think the MAPC feels that we, as a town, continue to build, um, a case for getting that grant. And so, if we could get that grant, that's another real benefit of working this through the MAPC because that's a fairly significant, um, uh, grant amount to help offset this cost. So, right now, where we stand is, um, we, we had, we were granted a budget of nine thousand dollars as a commission last year, which we've been holding on to in hopes of being able to apply it to this MAPC proposal. And then, if we can get this grant of fifteen thousand, that, that gives us a good head start into, um, actually beginning to execute against this proposal. Uh, we have requested additional funds for this proposal in our 2014 budget. So, um, we feel like we may be able to, to actually get this going here in the next couple of months with the money that we have existing, uh, plus the money that we've requested in our next budget, and then possibly be able to field this in kind of a, a three-stage process. So, as the funding comes available, we'll do phase one. More funding becomes available, we'll do phase two, and, and potentially go after some more funding later next year to, to complete this for phase three. The, the thing that's really important is what we want to get out of this is a, is an actionable plan. We're not, you know, interested in the sake of data for the sake of data. What we want to be able to do is, uh, start to come to you and the Board of Selectmen and, and the citizens of the town with, you know, a well-grounded recommendation. Again, along the lines of here is where we think it should be, this is what we think it, it should be. I think, as Victor mentioned a minute ago, I think a lot of people immediately go to strip mall on 3A. Well, that's not necessarily what we're endorsing. Uh, the MAPC is very, very clear that whatever we do and whatever, uh, directions they recommend, it has to fit with the character of the town. They are also very aware of our reputation as a, as a green community in the state and, uh, and are interested in maintaining that reputation. So, all of these things need to, to come into play. But at the end of the day, we want to be able to have the data, to be able to debate these kinds of recommendations and, and begin to make progress where in the past, you know, progress hasn't been made. There are a lot of proposals and, and plans and, and, um, assessments that have been done over time on this town, and they, they fill up a bookcase and they look really nice. None of them have been executed. We want to get to the point where we can, we can make the case to begin to execute. And further, if we are able to pass that meals tax, if we're able to allocate, start allocating some significant funding to economic development, now we have a financial lever to be able to, you know, again, assist the existing businesses as well as, you know, you know, maybe start to have some leverage with some real development. So, that's where, where this is right now. We'll be getting back with the MAPC soon, and hopefully, we'll soon be in a position, uh, to apply for this grant and find out whether we have those, those free funds, funds coming. So,
Just a question for you. In terms of this sort of regional market assessment and all of that, are there other similar assessments that have been done to the towns around us that we actually have sort of existing data on?
Well, that's one of the things the MAPC will look for.
Okay, but we don't know.
We do not.
There's currently a study that's in the queue. I don't know exactly where it's, it's stack ranked right now, but it's the 3A corridor study with Cohasset, but it's to Henry Turner Bailey. But I don't think that, that's certainly not executed, and I don't think there's funds for it. I was looking, when you go to the MAPC webpage, they have a stack rank of all of these, the items that they have. So, that would be one that would kind of overlap with this potentially. But that was a very specific thing, looking at traffic and, um, development along the 3A corridor in primarily Cohasset, but then up to Henry Turner Bailey Road.
And the MAPC coordinates most of these statewide. I mean, when we look for these, they're the ones that do these, and they also do regional studies and things like that.
Yeah, what I, what I was more interested in is whether Hangham or Cohasset or Marchfield and those towns have done similar assessments. So, you could at least sort of begin to see the framework that we're sort of competing with.
I imagine they have. I haven't looked at all the towns they've done. I imagine they have. Hangham's very progressive, the things they've done. I mean, they just floated a huge, you know, bond borrowing to expand their sewage facility down by Derby Street to attract businesses. So, this is, this is a little, you know, baby steps for Situate, you know, getting the start in it, but the things other towns have done are quite substantial and
As the example, if you want to take a look at it, I think you probably still have it. The one from Georgetown was really good to read through. It was really excellent.
Yeah, we have, we've seen that.
And we've seen the results from other towns after they do these, when they actually implement things because you're not sort of throwing darts blindfolded. You know, the, they're saying, you know, these are the metrics and traffic counts you need to support this type of business. Here's how much land area they need, things like that. And it also gives you some outreach capabilities too, to take the statistics that generate out of this and be able to go kind of market Situate and say,
Right.
here's our demographics for your type of business. You know, we want a green tech business. Here's the land we have. We're willing to rezone it and work with you, or we can make improvements, whether it's, um, you know, having money to help extend sewer or whatever it might be down the road. Uh, we actually have some money to help make that process go forward.
I would say also, review of trends in towns surrounding us may start to give us an idea of voids that we could potentially fill but have not been filled by those other towns.
That's exactly right. To your point, Dan, a developer has reached out to Laura, who reached out to the EDC.
Same thing, right, yeah.
Uh, because they're, uh, they're an outside developer. They're outside the area. They've got a parcel on the Driftway that they are planning to develop, but their question is, what should we put up there? You know, what does the, what does the town need? So, you're absolutely right. This MAPC project could, could give us data rather than opinion, you know, to, to really help shape how this town grows in the future.
Just for your knowledge, I'm the, uh, the Situate Planning Board liaison to the South Shore Coalition, Coalition, excuse me, which is the subgroup of the MAPC.
Oh, okay.
So, I've been trying to go to all their meetings.
Okay.
And actually, there's an open house of the MAPC on January twenty-ninth. You may not be aware, but they're inviting everyone to, like, I think it's like four PM to seven PM to come to their offices in Boston. I'm sure it's on their webpage.
Okay.
You probably got that too, yeah. Just to let you know.
Thank you. Good, yeah, good to know.
Do some marketing.
So, the last thing that we wanted to cover tonight is our 2014 budget proposal because I think this will give you some insight, as I mentioned, into where we've been and where we're going. I'd like to just switch, uh, to flip to the second page and just take a look back at some of the accomplishments over the last twelve months before we look forward. So, just a laundry list of bullets here, but, um, we hosted a maritime summit, um, within the last twelve months, which was something that Victor led. And it was, uh, talking about outreach, it was just an opportunity for us to start to get a sense of the dynamics as it applies to maritime. And we invited, uh, local fishermen, uh, local and regional, uh, commercial owners of maritime-related, um, businesses, and really had a very free-forming, uh, free-flowing conversation about the opportunities and challenges that applies to maritime-related economic issues, you know, from their viewpoint. We weren't sure what we would get out of it. And again, it was very free-flowing, uh, but it ended up being very, very valuable for us, provided us with great insight into, as I said, those opportunities and challenges. And it's something that we, I'll talk to you, uh, as far as 2014 objectives, something that we wanted to do on a more regular basis, both as it applies to maritime issues, but also, uh, you know, I think we can see a number of different audiences that we want to host summits for, whether that's, uh, developers or, uh, commercial. Um, there's a lot of different ways we could do it. Existing businesses, prospective businesses, again, free-forming summits where we can just exchange ideas and, um, more of a qualitative way of, of educating us on some of the opportunities that may be out there for the town. We advocated and were actively involved in promoting the Ocean Campus Center initiative, um, from a variety of di- different perspectives, and were prepared just to support them, um, as they moved forward with that initiative. Uh, from a marketing perspective, it, um, uh, obviously, we know where that went, so that ended up being a dead end for us. But that was a big, uh, that was a big focus for us. And one of the initiatives that we identified is what we felt was low hanging fruit for the town, along with the meals tax early in our tenure as a committee. Uh, we explored, have explored, uh, the willingness of the town to support a meals tax and also, you know, potentially increase dock fees, not because we want to, you know, raise taxes and, and, um, as the way of generating revenue for the town. But as we talked about with the meals tax, it seems like a almost painless way of generating some significant revenue from the town. As it applies to dock fees, our studies have shown that we're a little bit underpriced relative to, um, to other towns in the area on the South Shore. So, we're not advocating being more expensive, but more just bringing that in line. Those are kind of percolating, I would say. I don't know that there's a great amount of interest in the dock fees, but those are a couple of areas, again, that we looked at as low hanging fruit. We completed the two town surveys that we just went through. Um, we have been conducting an inventory of public lands. Uh, Laura's been very helpful in that. That will be really important as we move forward with this MAPC proposal to really understand, you know, what parcels are, are available, how could we cobble together, you know, what's available to us, um, from a, from a land perspective to even consider for economic development? What are some of the challenges that might be facing us? Uh, this, uh, obviously is an area that where you guys will get involved, which is, you know, what, if any zoning, rezoning might need to happen in order to, you know, facilitate economic development in places where it might not be available right now. So, then, um, as we move forward, um, we really have just, uh, two or three primary initiatives. We've, we started our tenure as a commission with a top ten, and what we've learned along the way is it's really important to focus. And so, we, we've really whittled that down to two or three things. Number one is the MAPC market study that we just talked about as a, a primary focus in 2014. The meals tax as a funding channel for future economic development, we just talked about that. We have, um, you know, we have put an article up for the, for the town meeting on that issue. And then, um, the third and fourth piece is here, conducting outreach efforts to local business community as a follow-up to the EDC survey. We talked about that. And engaging local development, developers in, in those business summits, focusing on North Situate, the harbor, and the Green Bush area. We've kind of rolled those, those kinds of things into what we're calling a three plus one plan. And, and we have taken our seven-member team, and we've divided it into three teams. Victor is our liaison with the, uh,
Town Facilities Plan.
The Facilities Plan and the Steering Committee that's been formed. He has a seat representing the EDC on that. That's the plus one. The three, uh, we've divided into teams of two and are focusing a, a team on North Situate, a team on the Green Bush area, and a team on the harbor. We have not forgotten about, um, Hummer Rock, but that's going to be a secondary focus. Again, to conduct, to conduct those outreach efforts in a very pointed way against those three, uh, markets, um, and, and to, you know, start to look at the existing plans, um, opportunities and challenges in each one of those individual markets. Then, the goal is to roll that up, uh, to kind of compare what we learn from those different markets. One of the things that we've heard from the Board of Selectmen is, and Eric, maybe you can, uh, confirm this or not, but it's a very fragmented business community. And, uh, these different, um, areas are not necessarily all pulling in the same direction, don't necessarily have the same goals and objectives.
The word that I use is undisciplined.
Okay.
Not only, not only in the, the business mix, if you will, but, um, you know, individual businesses working at cross purposes from others, and, uh, you know, people who find themselves in business because whatever they were doing before didn't work well. And it becomes the default position, uh, which is unfortunate because I think there are a lot of really lucrative business opportunities available, but we don't have, um, we, we don't have a lot of experience. We don't have a lot of technical know-how.
So, and that's not surprising. But, uh, I think one of the things that we look at is how can the EDC help bring, you know, these existing businesses together? Is there a, a greater good that can come from working more cooperatively? How would that need to happen? I think we need to understand, again, the, the ins and outs of those local communities, business communities, and then we can kind of take a step back and, and see if we can find some overarching issues or opportunities to, uh, to bring, to bring businesses together. So, that's the, so really, the MAPC study, the meals tax, and then what we're calling the three plus one plan is our overarching effort to really reach out to the, um, to the existing business community. Uh, the, the major budget components include funding for the, for the market study, a little bit of money for a little bit of money for these ongoing summits that we want to do, similar to the maritime summit that we just talked about. We, we have requested some personnel support. And I think the Board of Selectmen recognized that we have, you know, there's a lot on our plate. The MAPC is going to be an exciting initiative, and, but even with the help of the MAPC, it's still going to require a lot of bandwidth from our group. There are, there may be grants out there that we're not exploring, and, but should be, in addition to that DLTA grant for the MAPC study. You know, research, market analysis, even presentation assistance, assistance setting up the summits. Having, having a resource to help us with that would be very beneficial, so we have requested...
Bless you.
Half of an FTE for that role. And then we have some money in here for some software, some miscellaneous administrative printing production costs, those kinds of things. One of the things that we, we have been talking about as a group is the, the marketing and promotional activity of the town, which I think we have an opportunity to, you know, to improve on. And frankly, we're not sure that it falls under the EDC, but it doesn't seem that it's, that anybody's picked it up. That, I know that there will probably be funding next year to overhaul the town website, but what we've found is, there doesn't, if you, if you Google Situate, there isn't any place that comes up that gives you everything you need to know about Situate. There's a Chamber of Commerce website, but that's built for Chamber of Commerce members. And so, you know, that's just one example of a real outage that we see when it comes to people even knowing about Situate. If you are a visitor in the summertime, and you're, you know, you want to explore a new place to stay, or you want to know about the sites, or you want to know about the restaurants, there isn't one place to go to get that.
Yeah, think about places like, you know, we looked at some towns like Salem, Rockport, Newburyport, Kloster. I mean, they've done phenomenal...
Right. And it's promotional.
...promoting their towns. And you look at what Salem's done over the past 15 years, that's phenomenal, all through an EDC initiative, and the amount of business, and they've revitalized the downtown. And there's a lot of examples of towns that are similar to Situate, not just in Massachusetts, but across the country, that are these smaller...
Right.
Rural towns that maybe are geographically constrained a little bit, but have done phenomenal things, so...
Right. And so, it's one thing, number one, we don't have the information. Number two, it's not presented in a compelling way. I think we look at it and say, that's, you know, that affects economic development, so perhaps it falls under the EDC, number one. Number two, you know, there, there is some, you know, marketing experience within the EDC. So, we put some money into our budget to help with that, if, if we can. So, anyway, our total budget request is 68,750, and that will be going up to the Advisory Committee and the Board of Selectmen at some point in the next, probably, I guess, six weeks. And that's the scope of what we wanted to share with you tonight. Questions? Comments?
Well, I think it's fantastic. I'm really excited to see this moving along. You know, and I'm excited about the study, the MAPC study. I think that's really where the next step, and I think you really outlined that, and made it, like you said, just a few steps, or a few focus areas, if you will, of what we need to do going forward. And I think that's excellent.
Thank you.
I'm super excited. Thanks to everybody on your committee for doing this. I know it's not easy, so...
Same thing. Thank you for, you know, your time and your effort. I know it's, it can be time for something when you start soaking up a meeting here and meeting there. It gathers quite a bit. So, I appreciate the time for that. Needless to say, whatever we can do to support your activities, if you, you know, just let us know, we'll be happy to do that.
Great. Well, you know, I'm not sure what role you play in the efficacy of the budget, but, you know, that's right in front of us right now. Whatever role you play...
We'll take up a small collection.
We have a hat here in the back.
Take a few phone calls.
No, but, in all seriousness, which is, you have to be able to, you have to start with something to make some progress. And I think that this has been a year where we've sort of been under the, under the radar. We need to start, we need to get advocates out there who are participating in the town from a business perspective, from a townbody perspective.
John, you had something?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a quick comment. I think that it's really great that you guys are together, you know, if this is new to the town, I think EDC, first I've heard about it, I think it's really exciting. One comment I'd like to say, though, is that the land from Booth Hill to the Cohasset border, that whole strip is pretty much unbuildable because of wetlands.
Right.
There's really nothing that can be done from that strip. You know, I don't know if, if the town would think about redesigning the golf course. It really doesn't make the town a whole bunch of revenue. So, you know, the Driftway, I think, is really the potential for, you know, real economic development. It's a lot of town and land that it's, it's all up and dry and that sort of thing.
Yep.
And it's close to the train.
Absolutely. I commend you guys for taking the time out and trying to, you know, bring some more commercial monies into the town.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Super. Okay, guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Right on schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah, as usual.
Pretty much.
As always.
I was going to say, did my 500 responses to the survey asking for a Starbucks, do you think that stacked the deck?
Didn't show up here.
You obviously were tired when you went, started going to the business side.
Nattered without a trace.
Next item on the agenda is the special permit conditioning for Jacob Hatch Building. Good evening. You guys sit down. We'll call where we left it. I think the last meeting, structurally, we agreed to what the sign would look like. We agreed on most everything except for the fact we didn't have any conditions. I think the homework that you had and Laura had was to come back up, work together, and come up with the conditions so that we could vote, to come back up and vote and close this issue out.
Yep.
I guess I would ask you and ask Laura, tell us where we are.
Laura asked us to...
Hopefully it gives us conditions that we can vote.
Would you want to go?
Oh, no, no, you go.
Laura asked us to provide some more information on the sketch, which we did. It included things like the dimensioning of the columns to be six by eight or eight by eight. The, she also asked us to provide an approximate locus for the sign, which we provided a sketch for, which showed that the sign will be set back approximately 43 to 46 feet from the existing fence line. And I think that was basically the only question she had asked us to provide on that. And then we, she, Laura's office prepared a draft of, on a letter, which we had one, had one revision to. And last I knew, as of a couple of days ago, that's what we were going with.
I think we kind of memorialized everything that, that had been talked about in the draft letter, and the, all of the conditions of that are in, in the motion that we have. Basically, it has to do with the size, the color, the lettering. And I think it really came out nice from, you know, some, several kind of go-arounds on it. But I think now it's, it's got kind of a colonial feel to it, and it's got some color that looks like it will tie in with the building, you know, very well. The only thing that we were kind of going back and forth on a little bit, and, and I think it's probably not that big of a deal, but as far as the color, the wording of the letter just says that the color will be substantially what's in the picture. You know, we won't really see it. This is like our, this is like our last view of it, and it's going to be substantially like that. So, you know, hopefully that's enough. If you all really want, you know, they can, you know, they could come into the office before the sign goes up, and we could check, like, color samples or something. But I kind of leave that to you. I don't know if you want to get into that much detail or not.
Speaking for myself, instead of the rest of the board, I think we've kind of beat this sign pretty much out.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have copies of this, do we?
Well, this is in the file. I don't know if you, I think you got it emailed.
Oh, it was? Okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, but that's okay. If anyone wants to see it, we can pass it around.
You know, if we were a little more like cream than butter. And a computer can only do so much with three guys. Understood. Thousands of colors that are out there. I'm sure you'll do that.
They're going to be happy leaving the final color decision to you.
And that's, I, we appreciate that, because we do feel that that's, we'll make the best choice. The, I'm presuming that the last letter that we went back and forth is the essence of whatever resolution or whatever.
I think we'll have a motion here.
I just had a couple of comments on that. That was the one you circulated before.
Yeah.
So, so are we saying we're voting to allow a second freestanding sign? Aren't we just allowing one sign? And they're going to take down the temporary one that's up, or is that...
No, no, the original approval had an approval for one freestanding sign only. And that one freestanding sign is, is in front of you as you drive into the driveway.
Oh, okay, right.
It's that one sign that's about...
I think it's the one that's on the roundabout. This is replacing the roundabout sign. I see. Okay.
When you go over the...
Yeah.
Over the bridge.
That's where it is.
Permanent one's going to go, roughly there, right?
It just says Jacob Hatch Building. It doesn't have any...
That's fine. And we're going to put in here that, you know, they're going to, I mean, they're supposed to remove the temporary one anyway, but we can make that part of our decision somehow, that, before the new one goes up.
It wasn't in this letter. I remember, didn't make it to your decision?
Oh, no, it is in there. I'm sorry. It is in there. It's in the last one. Okay. And then we're going to allow them to have additional traffic and directional signs, safety signs.
Yeah, that's one of the things that, that you all discussed.
Yeah, okay. I'm fine.
Okay, it's a little long, but it's...
Can we get a motion here? Motion here?
Hey, what?
A motion tear.
A motion tear. I move to approve a minor change to Condition 8 of the site plan special permit for the Jacob Hatch Building, 10 new Driftway, approved March 2nd, 2000, to allow a second freestanding sign identifying the name of the building, the businesses on the site, and the availability of space for rent to be located on the applicant's property. The sign will face the roundabout slash rotary and be set back on the grass slash lawn area about 43 to 46 feet from the existing fence line, as shown on the sketch received on 12, 12, 12. The sign shall consist of a single-faced sign with no more than four removable panels of maximum size of 24 inch by 90 inch each panel, mounted over a 96 inch wide mounting panel. The posts slash columns will be six inches by eight inches, or eight inches by eight inches. The owner currently anticipates the color scheme will be beige slash cinder slash gray tone at the background, country redwood at the lettering, and white at the columns, posts, and trim. The height from grade for the new sign lettering will not exceed the existing sign height of 13 feet 4 inches. Final colors to be selected by the owner shall not be substantially different, and as further described in the sketch attached to this decision. Any installed illumination for the sign shall be from the ground or base of the sign. Internal illumination of the sign is not permitted. The existing sign at the roundabout slash rotary shall be removed when the new sign is installed. One additional sign for each business may be attached to the building or otherwise installed. Additional signs which do not identify a business may also be installed as permitted by the Town of Situate zoning bylaw, and as needed for traffic, safety, public safety, or convenience.
Have a second?
Second?
Question? Allos in favor?
Hi. Thanks for coming back, so...
Yeah.
I'm sure it'll look very nice once it's up.
It will. I have a quick question.
Nice building.
Yeah, I mean, it's a fabulous building.
Yeah, really nice.
Going over the bridge, it looks like someone ran into the side. What happened there?
Twice.
Twice, yeah.
Two separate accidents.
Hit it once, backed up and headed again?
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, no. Someone hit it once on the, let's say, on the eastbound back, probably about a year and a half ago, and then someone else hit it probably about six months ago on the westbound.
Yeah, I noticed it was fairly recently that there was change on a...
There were coming into or out of the building. One happened on a snowy night and never figured out who it was. And the other one was just...
They left their bumper.
Yeah.
Are there any, not that it matters, do you have any plans to, to do that at some later date?
You have your DNA and a bumper.
We had the insurance adjuster on the first one. And we were just close to getting started to fix that. And then the second one got smashed.
Wait for winter to be over.
No sense to, easily one without the other, so we were still waiting for the insurance process.
But you guys were here for the EDC, right?
Part of it.
That's, I mean, I think your building is a model example of the char, fitting into the character and the scale of Situate and being a business. I think it's fantastic.
Exactly. You drive by it, it looks nice. It doesn't disturb anything. It, you know, it's generating revenue for the town.
Generating revenue without a lot of consumptive...
Yeah, I'd be able to see who's in there.
And it's a good size, and you can see how the design features make it not obtrusive, and it fits in with the character of the town. It's exactly the type of thing we need more of.
I really think it should be a model going forward.
Great. Well, just let us know if we can help.
Well, hopefully you can.
Build more.
We'll find you some land.
Get me some land, and I'll do it. As long as it, I would...
Make 10 more of those around town. That'd be great.
Have you looked at the statistics about whatever would be in demand for that particular piece of property?
Sure.
So, yeah, we're all for that. If anybody's got any ideas, you know my phone number.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay. Next item is requests for lot releases for two, three, and four Dreamwald Estates. You're up, John.
Good evening. I think where we left it was, I think there were a couple of items that we resolved for this meeting. One was, what was going to be the thickness of the coat, whether it was going to be the highway, or the subdivision roadway, or the lesser, I would refer to as a common driveway. And then a couple of the other items, the surety for the additional work to be done. So, correct. Give us an update of where we are. Absolutely. I'll just read off the list that was originally prepared by Beals and Thomas. I don't know if you have copies of that or not, but there was, install the street sign. That was done last time. The street monuments were not done. I went through this punch list that they put together before I went on vacation. I was gone for the past week, out of the country, actually. So, it was important for me to get this done for tonight's meeting, to just go through it as a punch list, as if I would with a home. And I treated it like a punch list. So, there was install the street sign, that's complete. Set the street monuments, that's complete. All the lot corners have caps, rerod with caps on them. That was completed before with the, the meeting that was, took place without me being there. So, I would have shown them that it was done. Complete the swale slope that I put wood chips over to establish it, so that was completed. The install the level spreader, that was completely done at the time, three weeks ago, at that meeting. And I wish I was able to show him that that was done as well. Prepare the Asbelle Plan, I gave that to Laura. I think it was about a week and a half ago. I know that I spoke with Beals and Thomas from the airport. I scheduled a meeting yesterday, for yesterday at 2:00. Cleanup, I don't know what he was talking about there. The site is clean. And really, the only thing that it has left to be done is, what he has is the last two courses of pavement. And I do understand that it does show on the plan. And actually, if you read in the subdivision rules and regulations, it shows two-inch binder, inch-and-a-half binder, and an inch-and-a-half top. Now, I went to DPW and I saw that in the plan, which I can show you, and I think I showed you last time. There was a contradictory cross-section in it that actually showed a two-inch binder course and a two-inch top course.
Yeah, I think we saw it.
Okay. That's on the plan. I went, I went and spoke with the DPW, and I spoke with, I spoke with Al, and I also spoke with Kevin. They were not opposed to it, although they also said, "We really don't want to get in between." Okay? Because I wanted them to actually... And they said, "We don't want to get in between. We don't want to be involved." That was the response. Then the other response was, "Just for your own record, why don't you look at the cross-section of Havley Road that was just paved? It's one of the major roads in town." And Havley Road, I have that cross-section right here, and it's specked out a two-inch binder course and an inch-and-a-half top course. One of the main roads. So, I'm asking the board to consider that as a waiver. Other than that, if it were that for the top course, I have an estimate from my paving company, and it was just under, actually, I gave that to Laura. It was just under $12,000. And there was also, there was also a berm on Dreamwald Road, which I had no problem doing. I spoke with the board about that last meeting. Beals and Thomas had it at 300 feet, no, excuse me, Beals and Thomas had it at 180 feet of berm at like $3.20. I actually measured it. It's 90 feet of berm. I actually measured it, it's ninety feet of berm, not a hundred and eighty feet. So, that's the remaining work that needs to be done. I'm trying to set an amount so I can get a surety amount to put into play to have these lots released. I have two of them under agreement, so I've got.
So, is Beals and Thomas signed off on the street sign and the monuments and the corners and all of those?
Beals and Thomas had not. I had, I had scheduled a meeting for yesterday at two o'clock.
Right.
And I was.
Was it three?
Two o'clock, two o'clock.
And I was an hour late.
Well, I was in Costa Rica for a week, and I spoke with Dave Johnson at the airport and scheduled a meeting on Wednesday the week before. And I got back very, very late on, it would've been Tuesday, and I came back specifically for this meeting. And I was pretty disturbed when I found out that the meeting was canceled for whatever reason.
But thankfully, you calmed down now.
Well, I tried to.
Well, we appreciate that.
Well, you know, I try to act professionally, and sometimes it's difficult, so I do the best I can, but.
So, we still have, I guess, what you're asking for, as I understand it, the request for, to waive the higher, the higher pavement level to the, to the lower pavement level?
Correct.
Right, and then, in your estimation, all the rest of the things are, are complete, they have been.
And I'm not an engineer by any means, but I did walk the site yesterday, and it did seem. Well, I drove to Dreamworld.
Okay.
And then I walked up the driveway, or the road, excuse me, Kobe's Run. And then, like, the only comment I, which the, the road sign's a little hard to read, it needs, the bushes need to be trimmed back a bit, but that's a minor thing. But otherwise, all the monuments were there, all the incaps seemed to be there, so, and all the, like, everything that John mentioned has been completed.
Yeah, I was there Tuesday, Tuesday afternoon, and I was there this morning, so I agree with that.
John, what are you asking us to waiver for you on the pavement? Do you wanna go two-inch, inch-and-a-half, like Hatherley, or do you wanna go two-inch, two-inch?
I would prefer that, and the reason why I would prefer that is because, that's what I asked Kevin originally, and he said it would be okay, and then all of a sudden, things kinda got blown out of proportion. That's what I set all my grades to. You know, and all my grades on that road are within an eighth of an inch, and I think that that's important. Although, if the board was against it, I'll go the two and two, but now it's gonna set my grades off a half an inch. Not really a big deal. You know, whatever the board's satisfied with. Dreamwall Road's two inches, one coat, two inches.
Yeah.
It's in tough shape, though, that's why it's all cracked up and broken. It's not a way to build a road. But, you know, Northy Farm Road, two inches and an inch-and-a-half, Hatherley Road, two inches, inch-and-a-half. I think a common driveway, I think that that might be something in the future that the board may look at and say, "Jeez, if we're allowing Class A roads to be built in this way, why are we putting this in our rules and regulations?"
Yeah, no guidance from Mass Highway, I mean, they're just, they just talk about, you know, really big roads when they're in their regulations.
Actually, though, the Mass Highway spec, I think, is what the town spec is, and it's really overkill. And the town's not even following that spec, you know, so, just on.
Laura, you have a comment?
Yeah, first of all, I apologize for whatever happened.
Not an issue.
With not being able to reach you, I mean, I did try, you know, the methods that were available, and I guess that just didn't.
It's water over the town, you know, it's.
Entitled to you, okay. Because there wasn't a site visit, and I really, you know, we did talk, but I really wasn't clear on exactly what the next steps were gonna be, I didn't go out to the site, but it sounds like, like some of you did. So, the only things, I did see the street sign the last time I was out there. I know the monuments are out there from, you know, what you all have talked about before, and, you know, I know Richard saw those. The only things that I'm, I have not seen, and I'm not sure if they're there, would be the swale, the level spreader. Cleanup, I think, involves everything at the end, when the top coat is down, just, you know, making sure all the grass is in and all that type of thing. I did get a comment from Beals and Thomas that they thought that there would be some more seeding that would need to be done.
I was surprised with that comment, because actually, I put, I put three large bags of seed, which was enough to do three acres. I don't know, you know, where that came from. Hydroseed can be funny, because when you spray it, it's green, it rains, and the green goes away. But there is so much seed on that, which you'll see in the springtime.
Well, anyhow, I'm just saying, maybe that's something where.
Do you think they were building in any kind of, in case it didn't come up, that kind of thing, where you have to re-hidruseed?
No, it wasn't, it was with a, well, they felt that the hand spraying was not gonna be really the same as hydroseed. So, they wanted, you know, to see something, you know, like.
It was, it was, it was hydroseed.
Well, yeah, I'm just telling, I'm just a messenger.
Well, it was a hydrocedar, I put a thousand, I mean, I put so much, I put extra mulch, I put a stabilizer in it that actually stabilizes the green mulch to hold on slopes, and there's really not that many steep slopes in there.
Okay.
I mean, you'll see in the spring, I guess, you know, a lot of the subdivisions go over to Elm Street. There's no hydroseed anywhere on the edges of that roadway at all, you know, but, but there, there, the swale is in, but the way this, this is designed, and it actually has it in the order of conditions, lot three and four, the swale really can't be built properly until the homes are built, and not the condition of an occupancy permit, that that swale is noted to be built and correct at that time. It almost falls onto, you know, when I sell the lot, then the person that does the site work, although I would oversee that because it is involved in the subdivision, you know.
It's just hard sometimes to, you know, to go back once the lots are sold, I mean.
Right, right, you know, I'd be involved all the way through, though.
Can I just kind of?
Yeah.
Take it from the top here. Okay, with, with the pavement courses, I know, you know, John's been into CDA DPW. Kevin Cafredi came over to talk to me this afternoon and basically said that they were not gonna, you know, make a decision that it was okay. They said that they thought what was in the rules and regs is really what the planning board should ask for, so. That's what, that's what they asked, that's what his position was.
Yeah, well, they told me different.
Okay, well, I think, I think the thing is to get something in writing so that everybody's.
They wouldn't put anything in writing, Laura.
Well, I know, I know, 'cause they told me, they told me that, so.
Right, but they both said, "We are not."
They told me they were too busy.
"We are not opposed to it," is what they both told me.
I haven't had a chance to talk to Kevin, I thought I had him for a couple minutes earlier in the week, but I did not.
Okay, so that's, that's what I was told.
But you're saying, you're saying that your most recent conversation with him was, it should be what's in subdivision rules and regulations?
There's a cross-section at the back of the subdivision regs, and it shows the three coats, and that's, you know, that's what he said, you know. I'm hoping he said the same thing to both of us, you know, I wasn't there when he was talking to you, so I don't know, but that's what he said to me. The Cape Cod berm goes in with, with that top coat, so, you know, that's something that I don't believe was waived, so I think that should still be in, in the estimate.
That's fine.
The street sign is in, I'm taking everybody's word for the mon- and there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting that the monuments are in, the bounds on the lot corners are in. The swale, I don't know if that's been, you know, completed as, as per the plan, the level spreader and the cleanup. The Asbeld plan, we received, a lot of times with an Asbeld plan, it does go back and forth between whoever's reviewing it and, you know, the engineer that prepared it. There also is, is something that we would need to fill in some, some money for, and that is that, one of the reasons that we had to cancel that site visit was, we got the bill from Beals and Thomas for December, like, two days ago, and all the money had been, had been used up. And that might seem like they were a little excessive in their costs, but I think what happened was, because there was a lot of debate and, you know, attempts to negotiate with them and, and with, with everybody else, they did go back, you know, when they were all. Well, I'm just trying to explain.
I totally disagree.
Okay.
If I can touch on that when you're done.
Well, okay, I don't wanna, I personally don't wanna debate it, I'm just saying.
I'm not gonna debate it, I'm just gonna hit on some topics.
That's what I'm trying to say. So, so that's where there's also some need to put in some, I think it's eighteen hundred dollars for, that was, if there was gonna be a final site visit and a final report, if there, if there isn't, you know, that's, that's fine, but presumably, they would need, you know, something for the review of the Asbelds. And let me actually just look at that, 'cause I just got that. So, for the review of the Asbelds, they were asking for seven hundred and fifty for that, so, and they also had eight hundred dollars for, for work that they had done that, you know, was beyond the fifty-five hundred, which I don't know, you know, what we do about that.
Eight hundred dollars for what, say it again?
That was for additional services that were beyond the amount that they had in their budget.
Was there an original proposal, Laura, not to exceed?
It was not to exceed, I think they were, they were really trying very hard to be accommodating. I think this is one of the first, you know, I mean, maybe the second job that they've done for the planning board. So, they actually, they were at the site at six-thirty in the morning, one morning, they were at the site on a Saturday, and they never, you know, made any, you know, big deal about that, they just did it, so.
Let me ask this.
And this does represent waiving some of the, the money that they've spent.
Independent of the money, 'cause the money's a separate item.
Yep.
Let's just concern ourselves with the work. How do I get it off the dime in terms of either whether it's the subdivision road or whether it's the, whether it's the, which one of the two cross-sections would we use?
Well, frankly, I, I guess I'm, I've spoken with Kevin, he's told me what he's told me. You had said before that you, if you, if, if anything was gonna be waived, that you wanted something in writing. Nothing's come in writing, I mean, I guess I'm not sure what the, what the issue is at this point on that.
What's Tilden, is it Tilden Estates off of Elm Street, Steve's subdivision? What's the cross-section of that road?
I don't remember off the top of my head if anything was waived there.
It wasn't.
It wasn't, okay, well, then it would be the three coats.
Okay.
And was Northy Farm waived specifically?
Northy Farm was apparently waived, because it's two inches and inch-and-a-half.
It may not have been waived, it may have been on a cross-section that was approved.
Or it may have been before the regu- the newer regulations?
Yeah.
You know, again, I don't, I don't have a problem with the two and two, if that's what it has to boil down to, but, you know.
Let me, let me suggest this, right? Although, I really like, I like seeing you every week, every other week. There's gotta be a way of solving.
You're pretty good-looking, too, Bill.
Hey, you're gonna make me feel guilty. Is, is, let me ask this, is there a way that we can come back up and condition this to sit there and say that when this, 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 and this are done, surety is set at this, and when this, 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 and this are done, the surety is either, is reduced or returned? So, wait, can I do that?
Okay, well, we're talking about giving the lot releases, so, yeah, when, when, when the surety is put up, the lot releases, you know, go across the table.
Yeah, I'm sorry, when I said surety, what, but, in other words, what I'm looking to do is, instead of having to come back up where if we, if the board has to make the decision based on what we have in, in hand, we wouldn't be able to make the decision tonight. So, then we're looking at two weeks, I'm sitting there saying that it may be very possible to clean this thing up in less than two weeks. So, what I'm suggesting is, something to the effect that if we make a motion to sit there and say that surety would be, first of all, that to come back up, that the paving level would be determined, the surety for the following items would be, and the outstanding items that need to be surety provided for would be agreed upon, right? And then let you do that, as opposed to having to come back to the entire board.
I think that's fine, I mean, it's up to all of you, but it.
What does the board think about that?
I mean, I guess, are you saying that, you know, provided what he says is done, is done? Are we talking about a follow-up inspection?
No, I'm talking about having.
No, we're just, I don't think you need any more inspections, I mean.
Okay.
What needs to happen right now is surety needs to be put up so that John can get his lot releases, 'cause the top coat isn't gonna get done until, you know, maybe, well, whenever after the houses are done.
Well, I think the three homes should be built, and that's why I'm holding off on it.
Correct, yeah.
You know, it's something I could do, but it's not the correct way.
That needs to be put up, the lot releases need to be signed, but I, you know, would advise that you not, you know, just give out the lot releases tonight until you get the surety come in.
Oh, yeah, well, certainly, but.
So, I think you put that into your motion.
Yeah, not expecting.
You establish an amount for that surety, I think that's the important part.
So, it seems like there's two issues, one is the pavement issue, that we can decide is sort of a separate issue, whether we wanna grant a waiver on that, and then after that, it's just setting the surety amount based on what information we have. So, I, I think on, on the paving amount, I recall that on the original plan, there were two different cross-sections, is that right? In the original plan that.
That is correct.
The board approved.
Right here, and, and, and this, this is, do you wanna take a, this is the Hatherley Road?
Yeah, I think it's helpful.
Cross-section.
I mean, personally, from a design standpoint, I'm not concerned about the one-and-a-half versus the two inches on the top, especially if the town's doing it on Hatherley, and I think.
It doesn't, I don't, maybe I'm confused here, but I seem to recall that the cross-section was.
It's three coats.
Was three coats.
Right.
Okay, then we're not talking about two. What was on the plan was three coats, and that's what's in the subdivision regs, right? And now, we're talking about going to two coats, so, that, that's the difference, right?
But the.
There's a conflicting cross-section.
Yeah, there's two.
And that's why I went over to Kevin. At the DPW, the very first thing I asked for was, can I do the two and inch-and-a-half? This is a conflicting, see where it says two and two, right here, two and two? And then down here, you can really hardly even see it, it just stood right out at me.
Two, one-and-a-half, one-and-a-half.
Which one am I supposed to do? And actually, the review engineer who approved these plans from the beginning should've picked up on that.
Right.
Anyway, Dan, you were saying?
I guess I'm saying that, you know, I'm not, I'm not quite as worried about the precedent on this one, because there is a conflict.
One meeting.
I'm gonna say, I'm not, I'm not as concerned about setting a precedent on this one, 'cause there is a conflict in the plans that were approved originally by the board, because one of those cross-sections does show what he's proposing. I'm not concerned about this is such a minor side road with what, there's how many lots, like three?
Four, three, four, actually.
It really is more of a common driveway to some degree.
So, from a practical standpoint, I'm not concerned about it going to the one-and-a-half. I don't think it's gonna make a huge amount of difference for this type of a side road, and I'm not, I'm also not as concerned about the precedent setting for future things, because the plan as approved did have one cross-section showing it that way. There's sort of some unique circumstances here, so I'd be inclined to say, I mean, he said he would go either way, but I, I think we give him the one-and-a-half top coat and just let that go, and then let's agree on a surety amount, and we'll say, once the surety is posted, you get your lot releases and be on your way. I think, probably need to spend a little more time, I think, talking about the amount of the surety.
Yeah, I mean. It all seems, it all seems very logical, I'm wondering why we can't get the DPW to say that's acceptable. Well, I think they may be concerned about a precedent.
It's in the regs, and they don't wanna, you know, they don't wanna waive what's in the regs.
It's not really their jurisdiction, it's our jurisdiction to waive the standards, so they're gonna say the standards are what they are. You know, it's not their jurisdiction to vary from it, but it is ours if we wanna do that.
In fact, they're creating a precedent, and they're saying every time there's an issue, they can come in and request the lower of the, of the two, two amounts.
Who waived the standards for Hatherley?
Good question.
DPW, I guess.
Ah, interesting.
Yeah.
Well, these, these standards, I mean, yeah, obviously, they don't have anything to do with Hatherley.
No, no, I understand, subdivision, but you would think if, you know, what's good for a subdivision is good for a main road.
Yeah, I, I guess my stand on it, and I do agree with Dan, is that, you know, I would not want this to be precedent-setting, and I think that we should actually adhere to the regulations. However, in this particular case, there's clearly two things that are shown, so I would certainly, you know.
So, why don't we get the waiver out?
So, which way are we going, are you proposing? I would support the, the two and two, or.
Or the two, one-and-a-half.
Two and, one-and-a-half, excuse me, two coats as opposed to three coats.
And I think, to some degree, you know, the, the problem here was created by, by the board, you know, at some time in the past, and that they approved.
Drawings.
They approved drawings that were in conflict, and I think, I think our developers entitled to the benefit of the doubt.
And probably our consultant, because the consultant reviews the drawing and should've caught that the cross-sections were different.
Well, recognize that neither of those cross-sections shows a two, one-and-a-half situation. The two-coat cross-section is two and two.
So, we're sort of making up the third cross-section here.
Right.
Well, pick one of the two. So, you've got two cross-sections.
Well, I'd go with the two and two. Of those, of the, of the two choices we appear to have.
Okay, I mean, I'm.
You've got one, it's a typical cross-section, and then you've got one that is the.
Two and two.
That's your berm. The top course, the two-inch top course and the two-inch binder course.
That's the two and two.
Two and two.
The other one's one-and-a-half, one-and-a-half, or two, one-and-a-half, one-and-a-half.
Two, one-and-a-half, one-and-a-half.
Right.
So, one's two and three, and the other is?
Two, one-and-a-half, one-and-a-half, is what's in the cross-section, in the regulations.
Within the regulations.
You wanna do the two and two.
That's fine. I, I had originally asked Kevin, and he said two and one-and-a-half, and that's what I set the grades to, and that's what Hatherley. And that's what Hathley Road is as well.
Well, I think if we at least stick to one of the ones that was on, then we're okay.
Sort of have to.
Stay with the plan, yeah.
Let me suggest that we go with the two and the two.
That's fine.
Okay, rather than the two, one and a half, one and a half.
Yeah, I think that's.
That's what my estimate's for as well, is the two and the two.
Okay, so that's, do I have a motion to that effect?
I would so move.
So that motion was to waive whatever section that the, the requirements for cross section.
We're going to allow the cross section of the road to look like the typical two minutes concrete berm shown on the drawing.
Okay, but you're waiving the subdivision regulations. I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, yeah. That would be a waiver, yeah.
So I have a motion to make that waiver?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a particular detail number on that that Karen can reference?
Typical by two minutes concrete berm.
Okay, okay.
Could actually put the sheet number on.
Yeah.
If you wanted to.
I just thought, most of the time, the details are actually have a, a number associated with them.
It's nine and ten.
Yeah, that's easy to remember.
Unfortunately, is what happens with these plans now, because they're all computerized, they're generated with computers, is they're taking cross sections from other plans.
Yeah.
And they're just popping them on, just cut and paste, cut and paste. And it really shouldn't be done that way, you know, because it gets, it gets difficult for the developer to follow a plan in accordance, you know? And that's why I picked up on it right away, and I really should have come over to you guys and, and asked the question as well. Live and learn.
It happens.
And also, you know, get something signed. I should have had something signed.
Okay, well, that problem is.
That's behind us. This, this estimate was from a paid contractor, it is set at a two inch. So maybe that helps you with price wise.
That's set at the two and two.
Yeah, the two and two.
That's twelve grand.
We've got two down already, the two binder is down.
Right.
And that's the two remaining.
And what was, what was Beal and Thomas's estimate for?
They had for each course, okay? So altogether, there's would have been fifteen six. Like two thirds of that in pavement.
This one's eleven eight.
Okay, well then, that, that sounds.
Yeah, my number was actually higher than Beal's and Thomas. I thought Beal's and Thomas was low on that number. With two separate courses.
So we've got that figure, so let's assume we're talking twelve thousand for that, but we've got these add-ons as well. What about the cleanup?
Yeah, cleanup is just something that you just.
It's just a safety number.
It's just a safety thing, yeah.
Just a contingency number.
Do you see any cleanup, Bill? I mean, I don't know.
No, but it's typically the cleanup comes up, make sure.
Sweeping of the road, make sure the couch bases are clean.
Your hay bales are gone, you end up that your, your drainage structures are clean.
The loader was out of the way, I guess.
The drainage has been cleaned out, if there's any.
It's a minimal number. I mean, I think it was a thousand dollars on there.
And then we're dealing with the, the Beals and Thomas, the, talking about what, eighteen hundred for a final inspection? Is that what you mentioned?
Eighteen hundred was for an inspection and for review of the asphalt plans.
Okay, and then they also had.
Say eighteen fifty.
We're not sure we need the inspection though, did I hear you say that?
Could I touch on that just for a second?
Well, in one second.
I just want to see what we're talking about. So we've got, we've got, say we've got twelve thousand for the paving, thousand for cleanup, eighteen fifty for final inspection review of asphalt.
Okay, it's not really final inspection. It's because when, when the top coat gets down, I'm, I think there's probably going to be.
Top coat would take a few hours for it, for sure.
One inspection there, yeah, I don't, this doesn't include inspecting the top coat. So just as long as we're all, well, yeah, I, I think we probably need, I probably need to find out how much that's going to be and get that added into here.
Okay, and then, and then you said the. Now, is that the breakout of the seven fifty, the eight hundred, or is that in addition? You had the seven hundred and fifty dollar amount, the eight hundred dollar amount?
Seven fifty was the review of asphalt.
Okay.
And the.
Eight hundred is what ran out of?
The eight fifty, well, there was eight fifty for services that they rendered that they haven't gotten paid for yet.
Okay.
So it's sixteen hundred total, right?
So that's sixteen hundred, and then they, they didn't do the inspection. But they told me it's two hundred and fifty for the inspection, but then there's another, another price for the reports, which I don't have off the top of my head. Which I will try to find.
So we have twelve thousand, one thousand, we've got eighteen fifty, we've got eight fifty.
Okay, the, the swale and the level spreader are two other things that.
They get the level spreader for three.
They're both done.
Okay, they, yeah, they could be, I, I have it out there.
The swale and the level, level spreaders, a thousand, the swale.
What, what exactly is the level spreader?
It's, it's, it's about a six wheel dump truck of three inch crust stone spread. Alls it is is the end of the swale, so the water wouldn't break away the, the dirt. That's all it is, and it's done, it's completed. Can I touch just a second on this Beals and Thomas?
Yeah.
I, I'm absolutely floored. They were on site for six hours. Six hours, okay? They put together a report stating that there was going to be a five thousand dollar cost estimate, all right? With five hundred dollars of it, ten percent, probably coming back to me, okay? Six hours they've been on site. They billed me fifty-five hundred dollars to the penny, which I find that really bizarre, right to the penny, okay? Forty-one, forty-one hours. Taken off of, it's actually forty-seven and a half hours I've been billed for. They've been on the site for six hours. How's that happen? Forty-one hours.
It happens because they, they wrote all of these reports.
Yeah, but they could have dictated on their ride, I'm being charged. First of all, we should be using situat engineers, keeping it in the town, keeping it local. Why are we farming this out to a company?
And I'm not going to reinvent the wheel, but.
Yeah.
We've got multiple inspectors or contract, or companies that we use.
Yeah.
Right, and it's on a rotational basis is how, how we, is how we do it. So next time you may get somebody from town.
I, I would hope.
And there's actually a whole state mandated, you know, it's procurement code stuff. There's a little RFP process, and you can't limit it just in situ.
We're not going to solve that problem, that's, it's a bigger problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just.
Just see if we can get a number.
I, I think going forward.
I think what we're trying to do is, is to figure out what the level surety would be.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
So I think that, let me just start with what I, I think the numbers are. Twelve, twelve thousand for the pavement. Three hundred for the berm. Two hundred for the street sign.
Street sign's in. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The monuments are fifty-one hundred. The, the lot corners are eighteen hundred. The swale is a thousand. The level spreader is a thousand. The asphalt, they're not preparing them, you've already prepared them.
Correct.
All right, so to review the asphalt, as, as I understand it, is seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Review of the asphalt is seven hundred and fifty dollars?
You know what you told me?
Yeah, that's what you said.
Um, he's got three thousand in there, I believe.
I understand what they've got, but what you, what they told you was to review, because it also says prepare. They're not preparing the asphalt.
Oh, okay, right, that's for prepare, that's for prepare the asphalt. Yeah, it's seven hundred and fifty, that's right.
Seven fifty was review.
That's right.
Okay. I'm a little concerned about the eight hundred dollars, it's overage. Because we don't come back up if, if, if they're not billed eight hundred dollars, or somebody owes them eight hundred dollars, that's not a surety.
No, I mean, I think some of this money has to go into the guaranteed deposit account, and some of it is surety, and it needs to be kept separate.
We're dealing with surety right now. So the, the asphalt is really the review of the asphalt, and I think that's seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the cleanup is arguably a thousand dollars. I don't know what that all adds up to.
Can you give me the numbers again? I'm sorry, I was trying.
Twelve thousand. Three hundred. Two hundred. Fifty-one hundred. Eighteen hundred.
Okay, can I stop you a minute? Um, up to the fifty-one hundred, was that all from this memo? From the surety memo?
Yeah.
Okay, um, because that would be the surety, and then the other would be what goes into the guaranteed deposit account.
Yeah, I'm not talking guaranteed deposit.
Okay.
Because I'm talking surety.
Okay.
I'm totally confused, so everything's gone.
But any money going to Beals and Thomas has to be separate?
I, I understand that.
You're on that page, okay.
The only thing I'm dealing with is surety.
Okay.
Okay? So where is it? I gave you a thousand, thousand?
Yeah, I don't know if I can go back. It's right, it's at nineteen thousand four hundred right now.
But I don't know what you, you get both of my one thousands?
Um, all right.
Okay, he started with twelve, and then three hundred, two hundred, fifty-one.
Let me try it again. I got twelve thousand, I got three hundred.
Twelve five.
Plus three hundred.
Two hundred.
Yep.
Fifty-one hundred.
Yes.
Eighteen hundred.
Yep.
One thousand. One thousand. Seven fifty.
Where's the seven fifty from the?
In place of the three thousand for the prepared asphalt plans?
Yes, seven fifty.
And then a thousand.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three thousand one hundred and fifty is what I get.
Yep.
Okay, then they have like a ten percent for inflation on there.
Okay, so that's two, three.
Twenty-three hundred.
Two, three, one.
Two, three, one, five, yeah.
Twenty-five, four sixty-five.
Correct.
So that's the list of things that. So the maximum surety would be, would be the twenty-five thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars. Okay? So that could be reduced by confirmation that any or all of this work has been done.
Okay. Who do you want to confirm that?
Well, what I'm going to suggest is that it's you.
Okay.
But that's my thinking, instead of, I don't know if the board agrees with that.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
As long as you're comfortable.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so where we stand now, and we'll, we'll, we'll talk about Beals and Thomas in a minute. The maximum surety would, would be twenty-five thousand four hundred sixty-five. Reduced by any work, by the amount of any work that has been identified as being complete. Okay? So what I would look for is a motion to, basically, set surety at twenty-five thousand four hundred sixty-five, lest any work that's been agreed to and completed by, by Beals and Thomas, that's been completed by Beals, verified by Beals and Thomas, be reduced. And based on that, would, would determine what the actual surety would be. It would be reviewed and concurred to, the completions would be reviewed and concurred to by you.
Okay, well, let me just ask you, you said that that would be reduced by any work agreed to by Beals and Thomas?
That's been done.
I thought we were going to have Laura confirm.
Yeah, I thought you were going to.
Well, I think what he means is the list from the list they prepared.
Yes.
So from the Beals and Thomas list they prepared.
Okay.
Laura will.
You can subtract from that based on your, your observation.
I'm going to give you the most obvious example, right, is the street sign.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
You're going to reduce that by the street sign. But I'm not going to single that out because I want it as part of the list that was identified by Beals and Thomas.
Okay, yep.
So that takes care of, are we, are you comfortable with that? I need a motion to that effect?
So moved, can I say so moved? So moved, it was easy.
Say it, I'll second it.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now you've got a maximum surety. Now, the next thing to do is to come back and figure out what Beals and Thomas is. My understanding is the money that was, that was put up to pay for their work, that's been expended, and there's a shortfall for that, and with the remainder of the work to be done. I don't know exactly what those numbers are. But I think that before we release.
How, how can we really address that? Isn't that a contract issue?
It's a contract issue.
Well, they, they gave an estimate for, for these last, some last pieces of work. They have the, the overage, which is the eight twenty-nine, and they have the review of the asphalt plan, which is seven fifty. But you're, I'm completely agreeing with you because.
It was.
No, well, I'm sorry.
I have it right here.
Um, I think what happened was there were these extra site visits that they made when there was disagreement about what had actually been done, and they had, they went back.
No.
But those should be line items somewhere.
Only the messenger.
I have, I have it all right here.
No, because those were over and above what their original inspections were.
You, you have thesis, I don't have thesis.
When there was a disagreement, then.
Yeah, I, we're getting in the middle of like a contract dispute here.
I'm now, I'm now the DPW figuring out how thick the pavement should be.
I have all the reports, there's six reports, okay? Every one of them is, everyone is right here. There were nine site visits on it.
I understand, I think it's incumbent upon you to, to, to come back up. And one is, 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 my recommendation would be to put, put the money up so that you come back up and you satisfy Beal and Thomas, and then come back and argue with them about their bill, if that's where the issue is. If you think you're being overbilled, or the town's being overbilled, right, then I think it's, it's your money. So I would be, suggest you'd be the one who would look at it and, and deal, work with Beals and Thomas to figure out how much it costs and why are they charging?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only thing I, I want to say is, you know, they've been the consulting engineers so far. You know, I have a sheet that has their hourly rates on it and all that information if anybody wants to see it, but they were accepted as one of the three.
That doesn't change the fact that, at least in our applicant's mind, they're churning the file.
They're what?
Churning the file.
Well, we don't know what they're doing, but.
Well, I, I guess. I think it's the point, it's.
Yeah.
But we're the wrong people getting them.
We're the wrong people to do it.
Yeah, well.
But, but in any case, if you have an estimate to go like get your car fixed, right? And then they do it, and they say it's three times over the amount of the estimate, they should at least come with line items that say, okay, I found this carburetor that I had.
Not only that, but they should get, they should get the, you know, the overages approved before.
Well, you're right. That's, that's a whole nother subject.
Two things, first of all, they, I had quite a conversation with them about this because I didn't really relish the idea of going to John and asking him for, for more money based on the fact that they had gone over what they said they had spent. So, we had a conversation about this, it was originally, I think, about twelve hundred dollars over, and they did reduce that amount based on, you know, us negotiating about it.
These are still, these are still extras.
Wait a minute, what you don't, what you're not seeing is that they had to go back to the site additional times because John didn't agree with, with what they, what they said had to be done and like the last meeting that you all had, you said, oh, well, um, just have them go out to the site again and look at it again. Well, they did, but they didn't do that for free, they, they do charge when they do that.
Somebody had to authorize the additional dollars and if it wasn't authorized by us or by the developer, then they can't get paid.
No, that's why you're up to the fifty-five hundred, um, but I think what they're saying is if you wanna be, um, you know, if, if you wanna be, um, fair about it, that you, you would pay at, at least a portion of the extra work that they did.
Well, they need, they need to get pre-authorized though before we go over what our contract is about.
Oh, I know, I know, we've had that conversation and I, I don't, I don't think this is ever gonna hap- well, it, it didn't really happen this time because I told them, look, you know, we signed for fifty-five hundred, that's all we're gonna pay.
I'm just saying like, if it's not authorized, it's not authorized, they should've come back to us and said, we've hit our fifty-five hundred, we need authorization to do eight hundred dollars more worth of work. We'd say to the developer, you know, do you wanna do that or not? If we had a disagreement, we could say, well, we think it's necessary, so we're not gonna release your lots unless you have this work done and... But it needs to be approved by one of us before they do extra work.
Technically, that's true, but this whole project was on such a fast track that normally these inspections would have been over, you know, several months and they were all kind of within about a two week timeframe.
It was such an easy contractor.
Well, anyway, I think we're getting way off the subject.
We're very much way off because we're, we're in effect, we're, we're, we're muddling in waters that we don't belong in.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not contract administrators.
No, we're definitely not, but I think it's up to, to you to come back up.
I agree, I agree.
To do that, but I think that there's gonna be an obligation that the money is gonna have to be there and peace made with Beals and Thomas before they're gonna do their work.
Right, and, and I think that that's gonna be an issue because, you know, of the original contract I had, they have nine site visits, they've been out six times.
Well, I, that I don't know.
And, and, and the review of the as-built is on the contract.
But I think we've gotten about as far as we can go, we've come back up, you've got your waiver, you've got what a maximum surety is, you've got a way of having it reduced once Beals and Thomas concurs with the, the work was done.
The, the only other thing, I guess I wanna be sure that, that, you know, you're, um, just understanding, um, what's happening here and the whole picture of it as far as, as protecting the town and making sure the road is built properly and so on, is right now, we don't have any money for those last inspections because they've used up their budget for, you know, fairly unfairly, I, you know, I, I mean, I, I believe it's fairly, but anyway, we don't have any money for inspecting the top coat when that goes down. So, what I would recommend that you do would be to build that into your motion about the lot releases to make sure that, you know, that money gets, you know, gets put into the guaranteed deposit account, just to make sure that we have it. Um, because I'd hate to, for you to have a lot releases and then not be inspected.
Well, 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 you're just basically sits there and says that, uh, surety is set at a maximum of such and such to be reduced by any work that has been demonstrated to be completed by Beals and Thomas and be adequate money on account to come back up and, and to close out the, and do all the final, final inspections and paperwork.
That sounds fine.
Well, we all, we already did the surety though.
It's a separate, this is the guarantee.
Oh, the ga- okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I have, do I have a motion to that effect?
I so moved.
Do I have a second? And I so moved motion.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you know what your homework is? You make peace with Beals and Thomas, you put enough money on the account.
I don't know how that's gonna happen, but I'll do the best I can.
I'm just telling you what you gotta do.
I, I hear ya.
Well, yeah, and it just seems like no matter, anything you buy, there has to, are services, there has to be line items of like what they did.
I don't understand.
Oh, yeah, but I think most of that's been provided.
I am.
I do the best I can with it, did I, did I, did you folks grant me the waiver on, on the asphalt?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, I'm, I'm really sorry that this kinda got so confusing. You know, it's such a small, simple little thing that I built so quickly and it, it, it's been, it's been grueling, it really has. And I think that lessons learned for all. And thank you very much for your patience.
Just as hard as the big one.
You still look good.
And I, I'd encourage the, the board to go out and look at it, it looks, it looks really nice.
I try to do the best I can, I really.
All right, we understand that, John.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good night, John.
Okay, it is now E forty-five.
Oh, hey, John?
Yes.
Do you want this? This is the...
Oh, here, take this too.
Thank you.
This is the Hatherley Road.
Can we do a little site walk at some point?
Yeah, well, we'll be in touch, yep.
Thank you.
Let me know when I bring a striped shirt with me.
About a coffee?
Yeah.
See you guys.
Okay.
Okay, um...
Okay, here is the, um, we just get one of these lot releases? Have these notarized during the, the lot releases?
Yeah, there's just one.
Oh, just one?
I made it for lots two, three, and four.
Yeah, okay, so we, we gotta sign this and then this is gonna be held in the office until...
So each one of us gets all...
Do you want me to kinda embellish the motion a little bit so that, you know, the surety is proper?
Yes.
You know, approved by the town treasurer and all that kinda?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, we gotta do that.
We'd like to make sure the surety is proper.
Right.
So moved.
Make us look good.
Make us look good.
You, you know what we mean.
Okay, just fill out everything.
Okay, next item is order for items appearing to warrant and then, uh, we need to talk about medical marijuana and accessory drugs. Can I make a suggestion that we do the marijuana first that may be easier?
Yeah.
I'm gonna give a thirty thousand foot overview and then I'm gonna hand it over to Laura.
Okay, are, are you talking about the order and the warrant at all or are you just?
I'm gonna talk about the...
Medical marijuana, okay.
Medical marijuana. Since our last meeting, we ended up, had discussion with town council, had a very good conversation with the police chief, spent additional time on the internet looking at, uh, what other towns have done. And we also got a recommendation from, uh, other, other law firms, um, on it. And what the approach that many communities, particularly Cambridge is the one that started it, is to come back up and look for a moratorium. Uh, I think you've got a copy of the draft language for the moratorium. And it, it appears to be, and I think Laura had talked with someone in the, uh, state attorney general's office, that seemed to suggest that, that moratorium and the language of the moratorium would be acceptable to them. And what that would do is basically come back up, recognizes that for a period of time until probably, time certain, we haven't picked it, but would be April of next year from now, uh, on it, would, would in the fact that recognizing that it is the law, but we would come back up and have a moratorium till we get all of the facts and at that point then we would come back up and do a bylaw.
So would, no.
So, yes, I mean, having taken you to about thirty thousand feet, not let there, handle from there.
Uh, well, I think th- this really is just kind of a follow-up from the, from what you were talking about the last meeting. Um, the last meeting, you were talking about either doing a, a moratorium or doing a bylaw. And the problem with the bylaws, there are just a lot of issues that haven't been worked out yet. There'll probably have to be some kind of a licensing process at the town level and, I mean, I'm really just guessing, I haven't heard that from anyone, but you think about a liquor store and how they have to have query checks and they have criminal background checks.
The states are gonna handle all that, the department of health is gonna do all of that.
Okay, but, well, um, the reason I bring that up is all those things were in the original template that we got, that, you know, the town had to be thinking about query checks and resumes and, um, just a whole vast, uh, amount of information.
Exactly right.
Maybe you won't actually need and it might just seem kind of, um, repetitious to have that in the bylaw. So, uh, where all those things are being worked out and they don't even know what the sixty day supply is that people can have, if that's, you know, just how much pot that is. Instead of going ahead with a bylaw right now, the, the thing that seems to make the most sense is do the moratorium for a year and by then some towns will have some experience and you won't have to, you know, really feel like they're breathing down your neck trying to get it.
Did the town council also concur that they think the moratorium's gonna be upheld?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They did?
That was what the attorney general said too, in the, in the case of the Cambridge moratorium, right?
Did they, well, they haven't decided, have they?
Yeah, Cambridge already passed it.
Did the attorney general hold it was valid though already?
No, no, 'cause they have, I think they just passed it, um, in the past week or so, so I don't think it's... And there's some other town that has just passed a moratorium.
I mean, I guess, I mean, I guess the difference is I think Cambridge is a city council, so if their moratorium is not upheld, they can quickly then turn around and pass a bylaw where in Situate, we're a town meeting, so if our moratorium isn't upheld, the earliest we could do something would be fall town meeting, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, um...
I mean, I guess, it, I mean, I like the idea of a moratorium, I think that makes perfect sense, it's just do we abandon the idea of a fallback if we're not approved, just to have something, even if it's imperfect on the books, even in terms of limiting it to just a certain area, something even simple like that. I'm not sure.
I don't, the, the other, one of the other issues with the bylaw is deciding if you're really using it as a kind of, um, indirect prohibition.
Right.
Because if you look at all the recreation areas and you insist that it's gotta be a thousand feet away from those, then there's really hardly anywhere where one can go.
Right.
So...
I think if you also have a fallback position, you undermine your moratorium.
Well, and...
Because it's just there, it says that we, we're asking for more moratorium to have additional time, additional information to look at it. And then on the converse of that issue set there, it said, I've come back up and I've prepared something, right, which says that I've looked at all of it.
Well, I, I don't think so, I don't think it does that, it's just a fallback, it just says in the event the moratorium is, is not upheld, then, you know, here's the best we can do in a short amount of time.
The, the basis for our, our, our alternative last time was the, the notion that it was our understanding that the AG's office would not approve a moratorium and now we're hearing different.
Right.
Yeah, so if, if that's the case, um...
Well, we won't know until they uphold the first one, which might be Cambridge, but, you know, they either will or they won't uphold the moratorium. Regardless whether we have a fallback position or not, they don't make the decision based on our fallback, they make the decision based on the legality of the moratorium, so they, they're not gonna, the attorney general's not gonna care whether we have a fallback or not.
No, I understand.
They're either saying it's legal to have this moratorium or it's not, and I, I guess the question to the board is, do we feel like we need to have that safety of a fallback built in or not? I guess the risk would be the time between spring town meeting and fall, which is not a really long period of time, but you know, I, I don't know, it's a risk call, I guess. It's not, you know, what's the likelihood something's gonna happen in that short window if a moratorium doesn't get approved?
So, so let's follow the timing, is it, um, so the, the AG wouldn't get this to make a decision on it until after it passes and then they have a hundred and twenty days? So it's likely to be the summer.
June, July, August.
Yeah, it's usually August that we hear from them.
Right.
Yeah.
And if they disallow it, I mean, we got the fall town meeting coming up.
Could we even make fall town meeting with the...
Yeah, I don't know, but...
Well, we pretty much have the, the thing ready to go with a few tweaks. Maybe, I agree with what Laura said, is that...
We'll have seen the regs at least.
Yeah.
I mean, one of the regs actually due out, not until April.
May.
They're due out, yeah, May first.
Yeah.
But if you look at everything that's going on with the department of public health, they get their hands on the one. And all the other drug centers and everything.
So we don't know what we're, you know, we don't know what we're zoning for until, until that, that happens.
No, but the difference is if you have nothing and the moratorium doesn't go through, then technically right now, one of these could go in any business district in town without any local level regulation whatsoever. So that's the risk, that you would have nothing on the books.
Could it do that even if the AG's decision was an appeal? Like we appealed the, the attorney general's decision?
Uh, it's a good question, I, I don't know.
Does it stay, you know, kind of stay everything?
That's a good question, I'm not sure about that.
Get an injunction.
Yeah, it's not, not a legal battle we really want. There's not much money fighting with it.
And also, I mean, on the flip side, like...
Under certain circumstances.
What Laura was saying is I'd asked her for like a map of the restrictions because based on like one thousand feet from a recreational area, from a school.
From a church.
Yeah, so you look at even, let's say, the Driftway that has the medical...
A bar or restaurant.
From a liquor store, yeah, right.
I said the Jacob Hatch building is completely gone because we've got Little Steps. We've got the, the Grist Mill, that Stockbridge Mill, that's a, you know, recreational area. If you look at that, if you look at, there was the, uh, selling of alcohol, so then there's Reynolds Package Store, I mean, so basically if you look at this...
Well, ain't that a bar there, right?
If that's our medical district...
Preschool at almost all the churches.
So then, then are we actually, um, exposing ourselves to a lawsuit per se because we've restricted it so much that it's impossible?
You are, you are, no, you are, but I'm... I'm not suggesting that we pass this as it's drafted because it doesn't work the way it's drafted, I'm suggesting that do we need some kind of fallback position, it doesn't even need to be this. It could be something as simple as medical marijuana dispensaries are only allowed in the Green Bush Business District, period, that's our fallback. If the moratorium doesn't pass, then in the meantime, we work out this language before fall town meeting or next spring. If the mor-, this is only if the moratorium doesn't hold. If the moratorium holds, we buy ourselves time until, uh, town meeting in twenty fourteen. So it should be plenty of time, the regs will come out by then, we can refine it. I, I, it's just a risk call, you know, we don't know if the moratorium, moratorium will be upheld. It sounds like there's a good chance that it will, but do we feel like from a risk standpoint, we need to have a fallback on that vote that says if this is not upheld by the AG, then at least temporarily, here's what our regulation will be.
Concord has, um, has a bylaw that they're bringing to their town meeting where they, they allow it by special permit in, um, they already have a medical professional district because they have Emerson Hospital there. So in that district, they're allowing this by special permit and they're requiring, um, some type of a site plan review and that's all they're requiring, so it's really simple.
Applicable location that they can, they can...
Right.
They do, yeah, but I mean...
Where reality ends is we don't.
So they, they probably have sort of rules and regulations for site plan review within that medical district, right, whereas we don't. I mean, if we created a district, you wouldn't have any...
Well, I mean, we have general regulations for a site plan.
But we could do something as simple as that where we say, um, if the moratorium doesn't pass, the fallback is it's special permit only in this business district, subject to site plan review. It's still a special permit process which gives you, well, if you make it by special permit, then you've got some discretion, you've got ability to have public hearings, all that kinda stuff. And that would, it's like buying insurance, it's just a safety if the moratorium isn't passed.
That seems more reasonable, I guess, I thought...
Don't deal with all this, right?
Yeah, I thought on the table...
You would need to do that in, in two separate articles, right?
Uh, no, I think they'd have to be tied together.
You probably want to have it in one.
Yeah.
Because wouldn't, wouldn't the attorney general vacate the law if it's, I mean, do, do they line item, cross it out or they just return?
Often times they'll sever them, they'll strike the defending portions.
Well, isn't it, isn't it Westboro or someone did one that way, they've got one pending, I think you brought that, didn't you, was it Westford or Westfield, someone on? Somebody did it this way that it's pending right now that they passed one with a fallback and we're gonna have the town council look at that.
Well, the fallback is conditional, obviously.
Yes, exactly.
You know, if part A is not upheld.
Exactly.
Uh, then part B becomes in effect, otherwise...
It's like a savings clause.
Yeah, in a, in a contract.
Yeah, there's no problem putting it in one ish, in one vote, it just has to be drafted the right way and we were gonna look to town council to do that, it's just, it's a savings clause. If this part of it's held illegal, then this part will kick in.
So, just, I...
Is that how the AG will look at it?
Technically, we say that we put this up and we're gonna...
Well, that's for the town council to tell us, so...
Yeah, you can also call them, you can give them drafts up at the AG's office, they're pretty good at reviewing things.
So if we have this as moratorium till whatever date, fallback, and it does go to town meeting and we, they say, no, we don't want this, then basically we're open, it's like nothing, okay.
Yes. Yep.
I mean, that seems, I kinda like the idea of one article, just because I thought two articles would be very confusing to people, but...
I think a single article's the way to go, the issue.
You'd never get anybody to vote for the second article.
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about.
If it were standalone.
I mean, you, if...
Well, then you'd have your answer.
Well, you would.
I mean, I mean, I think if there's no practical way to do the fallback and the town council says that's really not gonna work, you know, the questions you have, we don't do it. But I, I prefer to have even some kind of minimal fallback, just as a safety, just in case. So at least we know that they can't just by right go down and pull a building permit and put one, at least they have to go through a special permit process.
Yeah, public hearing.
Yeah, just...
Notify butters, all of that.
Again, this is probably all unlikely to happen in Situate, but, you know, it's, it's insurance against surprises, so...
We're seeing monsters in the closet.
We are.
Well, we are.
Well, and who's to say it's a monster also? No, no, seriously.
Some of us think the whole idea is completely bogus, but...
Yeah, I mean, I don't necessarily think it's a negative thing.
That battle's already been lost, I guess.
No, I, I don't either, I'm just saying that, you know, like any use in a town, you wanna decide where it best fits. Whether it's a grocery store or a school or anything, that's what it is, it's all, it's planning and zoning, so I think that, and since we don't know what these really look like yet or what level or review the state's gonna do, make sure we have some control over it.
I completely agree, I guess I'm just saying some of the negative connotations that we have here discussing, it may not necessarily be negative.
Right.
It's like saying we wanna, uh, maybe McDonald's is a bad example, 'cause it's probably negative, but it's like saying, oh, oh, that's negative, 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 we don't really know the impact yet.
We don't, but our job is to protect against any, the unknown and it's a brand new thing for the community, so we'd rather be on the safe side than the not safe side.
I totally agree.
Yeah.
So where are...
Let me just ask you, if you, um, okay, so I'm gonna talk to town council about whether we can do like a part A and a, and part B and tie that into one article. If he doesn't think that will work, do you still wanna go ahead with, with two separate articles?
No, I don't think so.
No, then just, just the moratorium and not...
I think just the straight moratorium.
I think, I think you go with straight moratorium and, and if you could put, uh, you know, special permitting language in there to the extent that it, it isn't passed, then I, I could live with that.
Okay, okay, okay.
We have to decide where, I guess, as well, 'cause we'd wanna designate, you know, is it just special permit in any commercial district? Is it special permit in just one commercial district? I mean, what's the feeling? I mean, my personal feeling on that is I think we have a lot of the medical uses already concentrated in Green Bush, so that makes the most sense to me, that area.
Well, except for the fact that, that you could childcare in the Moore, in the Moore building, the Hatch building.
But you have that same issue and, well, something similar in all the business districts, right, in the harbor, you've got church and the, or Situate, you've got the gymnastics facility. It's such a small business community, you almost can't avoid it.
No, no, Situate's in the residential area too.
And I, I think my feeling is that the most likely place for these, I know we had one person that came at one of the earlier hearings said, you know, they go in office buildings, they're discreet and they're, or they go in medical buildings and things like that, so I mean, I, I do picture it like at the Jacob Hatch building or as part of a extension of the medical practice or something.
Harbor Medical or what you call the, the Driftway Professional Building, those two right there is the only thing I can think of, really.
So you've got two zoning districts there, you've got the Green Bush zoning, well, you've got the, the business district, which the Jacob Hatch is in, and then you've got commercial. You could do an overlay, create a different...
I think it's one of those really, I mean, I think.
Do you wanna do kind of an overlay coming out to, um, you know, to the Rotary?
Where's the Village Overlay District, does that come out to the Rotary? No?
The Village Business Overlay District, that's just the business district, so it's just, um, you know where that medical building is, that's the really old, uh, brick one?
Yep.
That might be.
North of there, going up countryway.
Well, that's the one that's, you know, where you see the sewers right down.
Well, that's the tennis club.
Commercial's, you know, Situate, Congress, you can see there.
Okay, so it's not the whole area.
So, yeah, so you go down the Driftway and that's where they call it.
I was saying we do it inside the convalescent hospital.
Well, I think you could mix and match or...
I mean, I just, Jacob Hatch is in, I, I...
That's actually in a business, the business district, and you go down the Driftway and that's called the commercial district.
I, I picture both of those kinda combined.
What's it called? Hamrock?
Yeah.
Fourth Cliff?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Green Bush commercial area.
I mean, I do accept the government of that.
There's no such thing, though.
It's only the US government. All the more reason. Yeah, no, no, it's illegal under federal law, you couldn't do it there.
All the more reason.
Yeah, then they could bring it in by boat, the way they used to rum, run, run it.
Yeah, I think it's called the Driftway Professional.
And that's not even in a business district, that's actually a residential that's our two, because it's like...
No, we're not gonna solve that as today on. I think we need to, I think we need to give it simple for this purpose and just draw a simple line and just say, this is the area and just- Well, we can refine it in the next round.
Well, I think-
Can I work with Dan maybe on the, the exact area?
Well, you have the map, I mean, I think it's just, we were talking about, I guess there's sort of a division in Green Bush between the business district and the village overlay, but I'm picturing both of those.
Well, and the commercial district.
Okay, there's actually three things going on there, and, well, four, what Laura just said. Because the professional building, the brick one is in the residential district, she said.
Oh, really?
So you shouldn't come out here and go back, but then, um, this is all the, on the north side of the Driftway, it's all the transfer station-
The brick building on, at the Rotary?
Oh, I see.
You probably, pretty much wanna keep on the south side of the Driftway.
Yeah.
I honestly don't know what, which building you're referring to.
The one that's got like Milton I Care in.
Oh, oh, okay, right, right, sure.
I picture like, you know, this general area, not all the way down to here.
So, um, you wanna go, you wanna go up to this, this is like off Stockbridge Road, the top of that, um, this pink.
Let me see, I can't dis-
That's down by Fitz Mill, right? Down towards Fitz Mill.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be a good place for it.
Yeah, people in that area tend to be a little sensitive about-
They grow stuff down there, don't they?
Right. That goes all the way up to there. I, I mean, this probably isn't gonna make a big difference, because we're gonna refine this as we go forward, but maybe we just make it the Green Bush Business District for this fallback position and call it good, and we're gonna refine this anyway.
Yeah, or if you wanna make it a little harder, you can say, make it the commercial district.
Right.
So, the business district is-
Why don't you make it the commercial district?
Yeah, I think that's, honestly, I, I was not kidding about that.
Okay, that's fine.
That goes pretty far, doesn't it?
Well, it does, but, but it's, it's wasteland, basically, right now, it doesn't really impact much else around.
Well, it goes all the way to the golf course, right? Or does it include the golf course?
Yeah, includes the golf course.
Well, I would assume.
Good use for the, the pro shop and then-
Begin, begin to grow out there on the freeway.
Generate some income for the town out of Widow's Walk, that'd be nice.
Out in the back somewhere.
Yeah.
That's fine, I think that works, it's, it's a fallback, so-
So, uh, Green Bush Business District and the commercial district.
That makes sense to me.
I thought we were gonna just do a commercial.
Okay, well, what, what is the consensus?
Well, can I ask, uh, I think that the confusion is, what's the, I envisioned the business district is a subset of the commercial district, but that's not correct.
No, it's not, that's a separate district.
All right, that's where I think the confusion lies.
Commercial is what most towns call industrial, but, yep, Situate doesn't call it industrial, it calls it commercial.
All right, so it would, from what you're talking about, would need to be commercial and business together. Because I was thinking it was subset.
You don't, but, we're just trying to pick an area for this fallback, so-
For is a fallback, I would pick the commercial district, I think it's clean.
Okay, that's fine.
You know, forget the overlays, forget, you know, the rest of that.
If it's not an if, then, it doesn't matter.
Exactly, that makes it easier to describe to, instead of a combination, you just say, it's just the Green Bush Commercial District as shown on the current map and just-
Then you don't need an overlay.
They've gotta get a special permit, site plan review, and just, that's the end of it for now, and we'll refine it going forward after the regs come out and-
So what we're gonna do is to go forth with a single, single article, predominantly the moratorium, with, with, with the investigation to see if there's an opportunity for a fallback position within that article. And the area would be the commercial zone if that is capable.
Yeah, and then it would just say, you can have this used, subject to special permit review, site plan review. And then the other thing is that the date, I think, for the moratorium, we wanna make sure that we put it out-
Far enough.
Far enough that we can hit the April Town Meeting that year, so maybe, is that always on the same date? Maybe we set it to the end of April, just to be safe or something more.
Can you make, make it for more, more than a year?
Okay, yeah, I think there, there was a little hesitation about making it for more than a year.
Oh, there was?
A year might be the max.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess if we, is the town meeting always held on the same day, it isn't, right?
No.
No, but, you know, you'll have like, like a week in there when, you know, you'll have already advertised, you'll have advertised-
Exactly.
You'll have advertised the public hearing, so anything that comes in after that ad gets published is gonna have to comply with what's in the ad,
Right.
technically speaking.
Yeah.
Um, so you should be covered.
Well, maybe ask that question too, I mean, if, if there is a hesitation about the one year, then we stick with the one year. But if they feel comfortable giving us an extra to the end of April, be safe, let's do that, just to be safe. But if there's some precedent for one year's the most you can do, then we don't wanna mess with it, I don't think, jeopardize the moratorium.
Do we need a motion to that effect?
I moved, I moved to that effect.
Do I have a second to that effect?
I second that.
Okay, do I have a vote on that effect?
Aye.
Aye.
We're giving Karen an awful lot of responsibility here.
So, when it says order articles appear in a warrant, typically that's not us, that's the moderator.
Well, it is, but I think that, I think it's strategically pretty important, I, I, I really do. I think you don't wanna have the most difficult article, or the most controversial article first. I think you wanna have like, well, maybe the medical marijuana, because that's maybe a no brainer to people. I think you want the no brainer ones, a couple no brainer ones first, and then work up to the harder ones.
So what no brainer is doing now?
Get people like in the passing mode, and, yeah, we like that, we like that.
I think the medical marijuana's gonna be easier, because it's basically, we're voting to do nothing for a year and study it, so-
That's gonna be hard.
Yeah, okay.
I think that'd be the earlier one, right?
Yeah.
And then you got the, uh, you got the flexible open space, which is kind of a housekeeping change. And then you've got the Village Business Overlay District, which is kind of a housekeeping change. But that one, you know, there was some objection to that for the Fall Town Meeting, so, you know, the same objections might come up with a-
Well, I think it was because it was zoning and then-
Yeah, I thought that was the only one.
That was, that was the rationale.
Yeah, okay, so-
We'll do that, and then we've got accessory dwelling would be the last one.
Okay, great.
Which brings us to accessory dwelling next.
So, so on accessory, the, um-
Sure, hang on a minute. Because I think we've got multiple handouts.
Yeah, I was gonna clarify here.
It should be a little, um, pack of, of handouts in your, in the folders. And the top one is one where, um, it has multicolors that type on it. And then there's the one that was distributed on, on last Friday. And then there's the one that, that I drafted. And the one with the multiple colors is kind of a comparison of the one that I drafted.
Laura and I went down and forth a bunch on this today, and the, um, the one that says draft accessory dwellings one fourteen, twenty thirteen at the top, that's what we worked off of at the last board meeting. And then what Laura did going back and forth with me is made the changes that we agreed to make at the last meeting. We talked about certain changes, and Bob, we looked at your comments too and talked about those.
Yeah.
So the direction from the last board meeting was to take my redraft, and then we agreed on changing five or six things, that's what this one is.
Uh, is that the one without the colors, or?
It does have colors, but it doesn't have a lot on, it doesn't have a lot on the front page. It says at the top, draft accessory dwellings changes one fourteen, twenty thirteen?
Yep, yep.
So that's our working draft from the last meeting. So that's sort of where we're at right now.
So what's this last one?
Well, Laura went back and made some additional changes, but her changes went to just the, to not my draft, it went just to the existing bylaws. I think we have to look at her changes and see how we can integrate those with, yeah, it's kinda imprecise right now. I think if we work off of my draft with the changes in it, and then we talk about the different items from Laura's draft, we can decide what to do to the one fourteen draft to make it look the right way. Uh, one four draft, yeah.
I, I basically, um, came to the, uh, feeling that I should make some comments and, and, um, try another attempt at a draft based on, um, some concern that these units are really valuable to have in town as another means of housing. People seem to be more and more trying to keep their extended families together. And it just seemed like it might become too difficult for people to easily do that, if there was too much, um, you know, too many things that, that were standards they had to meet. And, um, some of those standards might be a little difficult for some properties to meet. The other reason was that I did hear back from, um, some of the other department heads and from the town administrator that they were very concerned about restricting the ability to have an accessory dwelling in a separate structure just in one district. They were concerned about restricting that altogether, and they were concerned about restricting it, especially just in, in one district. And I'm not sure what all the reasons are behind that. But when you really think about it, I think that the way you are proposing to restrict the area with more, really a lot more control, and not have these be over the nine hundred square feet, have them, uh, maybe be thirty-three, you know, in the neighborhood, say thirty-three, maybe forty percent, you know, keep that, that also as a standard, but not have that be the maximum, have that be like, like the minimum. I think all of those things are gonna prevent people from building a separate unit where they have a small house. It's just not gonna make sense to go to the expense of putting in a foundation if you only have like a, a nine hundred square foot house. And a lot of those houses down there are, are that size, um, so-
So they were coming out, I think, it sounds sort of like from the standpoint of it might be harder to get it passed, because people are gonna see that there's a difference between the districts and, you know-
You've lost something.
It, it points to treating them differently, and it might make it harder to explain versus if it's not a practical issue anyway, because we've got the size restriction, why include that?
That's interesting, you'll have two constituencies, of course, in the, in the, you know, in the districts with smaller lots. You'll have the people who don't want it to happen, because they don't want the neighborhood to become more crowded than it already is. And you'll have the people who see it as a, an opportunity that's being denied them.
Yeah, and just by way of background, I looked at, you know, towns all surrounding us, Cohasset, Marshfield, other places, most towns do not allow separate structures. Most towns, it's gotta be, not even attached, it has to be within the structure. And a lot of them have the, you know, ten year, the house has to exist for ten years, you can only carve it out from existing house, can't be separate, has to be a single unit. So, you know, ours right now just says it can be separate. And so I, I was looking at it from the perspective of the, um, the one we had in front of us on Garden Road. That sort of, the conclusion we got to eventually is in that type of a district with small lots, they really should all be attached, because there's no way to make it look subordinate otherwise, so, but, but I guess you have to weigh that against, how hard will it be to get it passed at town meeting if we're treating dist- districts differently versus just having the size restriction? And you can still do the has to be subordinate language and get there.
Well, we've definitely come a long way on the size restriction.
Yeah.
I mean, we've gone from the greater of to the lesser of, you know, so, I mean-
So, I, I guess I'm not as concerned about that point if we wanna drop that piece of it, because a size restriction, you know, if it's less than forty percent or nine hundred square feet, it is gonna be hard for someone on a small lot to go to the expense to make another foundation. And we could always still review it like we did Garden Road and say-
Oh, right, I mean, Garden Road started out as a separate, separate dwelling, you know, building as well. And we were able to modify it during, during the terms of leave.
As Dan likes to tell me all the time, it's a special permit, like, we can dictate what we-
Well, we can, within reason, if we have reasonable grounds.
Capability, then I think that you basically-
I guess you're right.
So I think he should allow them in all, in, in all of the districts.
So I, I think the process worked really well with Garden Road, because you, you got that one completely turned around and, uh, you know, turned into something that was much more acceptable to people.
So let, so let me see, in this, in the one four draft, where that comes up is that we had a separate provision for, by district, right? And we said if it's in, oh, by lots, by lot size. So where does that come from? Oh, I see, it's a, it's a H, I think. A lot less than twenty thousand must be located within interior, and it's in the same roof of the house, or in structure attached in grids, one actually, within interiors.
I think you can combine G and H.
Yeah.
Yeah, you kinda just edited all that out in your draft, right, Laura?
Yeah, well, I was just starting with the, with the basic bylaw, but I can, I can work with that somehow.
So G and H, we, so instead of saying, let's see, a lot which is twenty thousand square feet or more must be located in interior. Oh, I see, so, so really, yeah, G and H get, actually, G just, you take H out.
H, yeah.
And you just say they all have to be located either in accessory dwelling.
C, and it's in the-
You just say, in G, you just say in accessory dwelling must be located within the interior.
I, I need to point, point something out, and that is, in, in my neighborhood, the, the custom is, or the custom's always been when those houses were built, that the houses were all crowded to one inch of the wall. And then many of the houses are built with, with a, an unattached garage, uh, and that's, that's sort of the custom there. And so the, the thing that I'm, I'm thinking we, we need to take into mind, into mind is that if someone wants to build a garage, which has always been accepted within the neighborhood, um, and they wanna happen to put an accessory dwelling on the second floor of the garage, which would fit into the neighborhood,
Right.
then, then, uh, then we ought to be able to say something along the lines, as long as your garage fits in the neighborhood and your accessory dwelling fits within the roof line of what would normally be there, you're okay.
Well, we're saying we're just doing away with that restriction entirely.
Oh, okay.
So that would be okay, based on a special permit.
Yeah.
And it would just have to fall within that nine hundred to forty percent.
So H, H comes out, and then G, you just say, instead of saying associated with a house in a lot which is twenty thousand square feet area or more, you just get rid of the area piece, and you just say accessory dwelling must be located within the interior or under the same roof as a house, in a structure attached there too, or detached on the same wall.
Yeah.
And just period, and get rid of H entirely. I, I think practically it's not a concern.
Yeah.
In this draft, yeah.
And what else, Laura, what were the other big points that you were concerned about?
Okay, never mind, you, we've got that, I was saying the three years, but you have it up here, so never mind, yeah.
That one kinda, the, the years bothered me, because it, we've had this bylaw for twenty years, and we really haven't had a problem with, with anything specifying that we needed it, you know, it had to be there for three years.
Well, in, in two thousand four, it, it used to be the house had to exist from before nineteen eighty-nine. And then in two thousand four, that language was taken out. So it's been eight years that people haven't had to think about that. And the other thing is, I think if you're building new, especially if the accessory dwelling's gonna be under the same roof, you can really integrate it better than if you're dealing with, you know, an existing house that, um, you've gotta kind of add something onto and-
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, like, the one in Garden Road maybe is an example of that too, how hard it was to do that, because the chimps in the way and-
I, I think it goes to the intent of the bylaw, because I looked at the state model bylaw, the, um, Citizens Planning Training Collaborative, Cohasset, Marshfield, and I think, I looked at all the towns around us. Everybody had a year restriction, every single one, because I think when accessories came out originally, it was the notion that you live in a house already, it's been there before, you're not gonna change the character of the neighborhood, and you have a situation where you need an in-law or elderly, you know, to move in with you. So it's not meant to be sort of a, for new development, it's meant to be, I have a situation where I need to have an accessory dwelling on my house that's been here, so I'm not really chang-, you know, it minimizes the change in the neighborhood, and that's, that's where this came out of. And so I have not seen a town that doesn't have year restrictions. And the original suggestion I had was ten years, which was kind of the norm. So I'm a little hesitant, I think there might be reasons we're not thinking of-
Well, you were concerned about it being a zoning, and, I'm not zoning, but like a developer would come in and basically, instead of a, a neighborhood of single family homes, it would be a back door for them to have, um, you know-
Duplexes.
Well, sure, I could, I could buy, you know, I could go to Garden Road and buy five houses in a row, demolish all of them, and come in and get a permit to put, you know, basically two units on each one. And I, I think it's very unlikely to happen, and we haven't had many of these, but there's a reason why they have the years in there, because you're sort of saying that the character of the neighborhood is also important. And this is like a basic safeguard, that this is not used as a new development tool, this is for existing houses and-
But we've had a bylaw for twenty years and it hasn't been a problem.
That doesn't mean it won't be in the future. In other towns, all, they have the same situation, and they all have this restriction on them.
I, I think the other thing, though, is that you've got a really good piece now about the size that, you know, is completely different from what you had before.
Couldn't be a developer that come in and build a thousand square foot house and then-
Yeah, I, I think it's gonna work so that, um, even with a new house, it's, it's gonna be subordinate now. It's not gonna be like, like a duplex, it's gonna have a whole different feeling to it, I think.
You couldn't have like, for instance, like you said, two of them being equal.
I, I don't know, I, it bothers me, because I think it, you know, going along with the intent of it, I picture like if we had an application in front of us in Garden Road where somebody bought one of those houses and bulldozed it, and now it's in front of us with a two unit piece, how upset the neighbors would be. Why are we allowing somebody new to come in the neighborhood and change the character this way versus someone who needs? You know, originally, when we first passed the bylaw, it was only for affordable units. Some towns have restrictions that it has to be a relative, um, that's what the state model is, it actually has to be a relative, so-
They actually don't accept that in these offices.
Really has a multiple set of purposes in, right, that addresses more than just relatives, but-
Yeah.
But, you know, I, I, I think I, what I see is that if you had a house you built a year ago, and you suddenly ended up in a family situation where, you know, you needed your, your sick mother or in-laws or whatever to move in with you, I can see where somebody would want to do an accessory dwelling, you know, to, to accommodate that, so-
I mean, if I look at my situation, and then my house is in, in lot, it's inappropriate to put any kind of an addition on, because of the proximity to the marsh and, and, and the road. So, and, and I would be unable to put an accessory dwelling on my house, so I would have two years to go buy, buy one that has an accessory dwelling in it. Or I'd have to come back up and buy a house, wait three years, and then come back up, put an accessory dwelling on it.
Or you buy the new house, you're saying, if you buy an existing house- Or you buy the new house, you're saying. If you buy an existing house.
If I bought it, if I bought, if I built a new house, I couldn't put, according to this, I couldn't put an accessory dwelling.
Right, right. That's right, yeah.
Right.
But.
But I've got a ninety-three-year-old mother, by the time I build her a house, she's not gonna be there.
So, Dan, would the, the, because we're doing this through special permit, would that, um, ease your fears, so to speak, in the sense of if a developer came, I mean, we could look at this each one individually and say.
Well, we would be, yeah. Um, I, you know, I'm not gonna, you know, this is not the biggest of issues in this. I mean, I disagree with that. I think there should be a year restriction on it. I looked at all the other towns, they all have them except for us, so I, you know, I, I do think it's the right way to do it. And I think there's a reason everybody does it that way. Um, I think it protects the character of the neighborhood, but it sounds like I'm not getting support on that, so. It's, it's not, it's not an issue that, you know, I'm gonna be super upset over. I, I just think it's the right way to do it. And I think coming down from the ten-year requirement to three years is, I've not seen one that low in the other towns, so.
My take on it is I would suggest that it served us well without it. I'd leave it out. If it's a problem, then I, we could put it back in.
Well, that's another question I think I asked last time. I can't remember what the answer was. Has anyone come to us with a brand-new dwelling? A brand-new, brand-new house?
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah. I mean, even the one on First Parish Road, um, I don't know how you wanna look at that one, but the, the primary dwelling's gonna be the new dwelling on that one.
Right, gonna be the accessory dwelling.
Yeah, the existing's gonna be the accessory, but I, 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 I think there've been some others. I'm trying to think where they are.
Yeah, we've had, I think, one that I can recall.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's.
I wrote it down by Saint Mary's.
It's fairly common, the, the idea that, you know, two families, uh, parents and their children will.
The schoolteacher, I've got middle, middle block for her name.
Oh, over the garage?
Over the garage.
Well, let, well, let's take it out then, and we'll just, we'll move on. Let's take it out, and if it becomes an issue when we get another Garden Road, we'll change it then, so.
Well, that, that's the problem with Garden Road is that was a tough case.
It was.
Tough cases make bad law, you know.
So let's take out the three-year requirement.
They point out some inconsistencies.
And we're taking out the, um.
Does that mean we're taking out E?
So, uh, let's see, it's, I don't know, should take effect sooner than three years, I don't know.
Yeah, we think.
Yeah, yes. Um, yeah, E comes out completely.
Is it all of E?
Yep. E comes out completely and.
H comes out completely.
Uh, yeah, and H is coming out completely, and G gets modified. What, what else, Laura? Were there other concerns?
Well, the, the other ones are really pretty minor. Um, I think that, um, you know, I, just thinking about the curb cut thing again. I, I know we, we talked this one through a lot last time, so I kind of don't even wanna bring it up, but I was.
I do.
Oh, okay, well, I, I'm thinking about like a corner lot. We had that corner lot on Country Way, and was it Huey or one of those?
Yeah, that's the same one I'm thinking of, because it ends up, it may logically have, some, some, it'd be, let me go back and start over. Some lots in configurations may present themselves to the fact that it's logical to have two curb cuts. The one we did on Garden Road, you could build an, an argument that you're saying, very easy, saying, you're saying it's a special permit, and what you're gonna have is all your parking is gonna be on a single one.
Right.
And I think you make it as a condition rather than come back up, um, and, and say that there will be no more than one curb cut.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because I think that's one of these versions.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
No, it's the, the end of, uh.
And I decide, at least in my mind, it made more sense to, to cover it as, as a.
As a condition or something?
As a condition than it was to sit there and say, it's gotta be that, because now what I've got, whether I want it or not, I'm gonna have two curb cuts.
So where, what is section is that in? That's in.
I think you could just take the, um.
Take the sentence out of the end of J.
Yeah.
J.
Just the, the red part.
J. Yeah, the one that says there shall be no more than one curb cut.
The end of J comes off.
Mm-hmm.
And Laura.
If you had a horseshoe, uh.
And then Laura, you had some changes in, in your version that were new concepts that I also liked that we'll have to integrate. So like you did that definition of net floor area.
Um, yeah, the, the reason I did that is ever since I've been here, which is, you know.
If you look at.
Way too long in probably some people's minds, but, um, ever since I've been here, people coming in with these applications have used different definitions of floor area. Some have gone from the outside of the house, some have gone from the inside of the house, some count stairs, some don't count stairs. And it kind of gets molded to whatever works for the situation, which I, I completely understand, but I think it'd be good to have some things standardized. And, um, there have been some with some, some pretty steep eaves where I think after a while, the board did start just looking at, you know, what's the habitable space in terms of the height, you know, in terms of the.
There's some pretty specific language and regulations that will tell you that. And I can't lay my.
But we, we never had that, we never had that before.
Yeah, yeah, no, but I mean, you wouldn't have to make it up. It's, it's already, it's already there.
So Laura.
That's what we're doing.
This, like, really heavily redlined version is sort of a comparison to some of the changes Laura came up to my prior draft. But if you look at the, the top there, she's got this net floor area definition that refers to the Mass Building Code.
Yep.
So we just go by if the Mass Building Code says it's habitable.
I think that's what you wanna do. Yep.
So I wanna get that, so that concept will have to be added into my re-draft. And then also, we talked about using the term, um, primary dwelling, which you caught in your draft, which would need to go into this one. I think I was using a house or something, and you said primary dwelling's more consistent with the rest of the bylaw. So those are the two concepts I saw in there that would need to go in there.
We also need to go back and pick care, table four, uh, four twenty.
Okay, good point, yep.
Because we're gonna have to take out affordable.
Right.
Is that the connection to the marijuana?
Familiar with that reference?
Yes.
Make those changes to my draft into this, when Karen sent out, make those changes, and then add these couple concepts from yours into this draft and circulate that, I think will be there. And I, this time, I was super busy at work, so Laura had handled this almost exclusively herself in the last board meeting, because I was just all out at work. But she did a great job of kind of pulling it together, but this time I will, I'll make the time to look at it a little sooner than our next meeting. Now, are we gonna try to do a working session?
Okay, we're not quite.
Okay, I got two more items.
Yeah, me too, or one.
One is under O, I think it lay in the right.
On Dan's, look at.
Oh, with the twenty-five, um.
Twenty-five.
Four, yeah.
Which one?
Okay, we went from ten to twenty-five?
Oh, yeah, to, actually, that makes it more, you know, looser, which maybe I, I wouldn't have.
I don't have a problem with that.
We talked about that the last meeting.
That's what we said the last meeting.
We said we'll probably never hit that, but it's nice to have some outside thing.
Okay, and then we'll go back and, and, okay.
Oh, yeah, didn't we talk about forty percent there instead of thirty-three?
Yeah, I was, yeah.
Forty percent or nine hundred? That's the other change, yeah. Is that what you were thinking, Bill?
Yep.
I think we agreed on that, yeah.
Forty, okay.
The, the lesser of forty percent or nine hundred square feet.
If I've got a nine hundred-foot square foot house, and then I can put forty percent of that, so what, three sixty?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's twelve sixty. That's about the equivalent, that's not, that's a small two-bedroom house, or two-bedroom room.
Yeah.
Very, very small.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Micro home.
And that, but then that twelve hundred square feet, twelve hundred sixty square feet, I'm now expecting to have at least two new bedrooms.
No, no, maximum of two new bedrooms.
Maximum. You can still do a one-bedroom.
Or a studio.
You're talking about the three sixty square feet for the maximum, yeah.
Yeah, probably one, probably one bedroom.
It's probably a one-bedroom, yeah.
A studio.
Or a studio.
Yeah, you'd have like eighteen by twenty, um, little space with a little kitchenette in it.
Absolutely.
Low couch. Yeah.
And, and that's, that is actually.
I've lived in places smaller than that.
Yeah.
Every day that comes down, on holidays, it's a table, and then on, on weekdays, it's a bed, right?
Yeah, and again, that's greater than what other towns allow, both the forty percent and the nine hundred, so everyone else is at seven fifty, and they're usually at about twenty-five percent, so. So we're being more liberal on that.
I think the only other difference in here is that I wanted to add some language about, um, I don't know if you had this, Dan, that you, uh, that, that it would be good to, to integrate the accessory unit as one architectural unit with the house. Um, did you have something like that?
Well.
Maybe you have something like that.
Consistent exterior design and the combined appearance of a single dwelling.
But that's only if it's attached, right, though.
Yeah, it's only if it's attached, but still, I think it might be good to kind of strengthen that idea.
Yeah, I like that idea, just, like, from a design standpoint, it'll be.
Well, yeah.
That's already in J, isn't it?
J is, doesn't J say that? If attached to the house, it'll be designed so that the appearance of the house and accessory dwelling have a consistent exterior design and the combined appearance of a single dwelling.
Missed that.
Okay, what's.
It's in J. So maybe you can look at J and see if there's any little tweak to J to see if that needs to be tweaked a little bit.
At what point do we have to have the final language?
We were saying tonight, basically, unless you add in an extra meeting. Um, I mean, the problem is meeting on February seventh and, um, oh, no. The problem is that we're not, you're not meeting until, um, after Valentine's Day.
Well, we're meeting on the twenty-fourth, okay?
That's what the problem is.
And then we moved the meeting in February to go to the first and third instead of the second and fourth, because Valentine's Day is February, what, the second, Thursday? So if you throw in an extra meeting or switch your meetings in February back to the original schedule, then you gain a week. Basically, we need to get the, what we tried to do when we set the hearing schedule is we tried to give you a date for the hearing and a continuance date. So that the advisory committee needs to make their recommendations by mid-March. So you only have a meeting, one meeting in March, and I would think the advisory committee wants to know more than five days before that everything has to go to print.
Let me go back. Our, our next meeting is seventeen twenty to twenty-four.
It's the twenty-fourth, yes.
Okay.
And then, yeah.
So what, if we come back up and, and we make these changes, and I'd like, I guess I'll make the same all in, in single color, so at least I got something on it, because I got more copies and more script on these things. Um, is, so we could come back up and finalize the, the verbiage on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I think the, the issue is how much time we need to advertise and to get the ad into the paper.
Right, you need three weeks.
I see.
So you finalize on the twenty-fourth.
Yep.
I get the ad, it's gonna be very hard to get the ad to the paper, but we can try to have it worked out, so we get the ad to the paper on the twenty-fifth, but that's a big F. So it goes in on the thirty-first and the seventh.
Because the very next week, we have another meeting.
I, I think we can finalize this right now. I mean, we're, we're right there. I think if we spend a couple more minutes, we can finalize this, but the question is, are we okay on the medical marijuana one, too? Or do we have to, subject to confirmation of, with the town council, we'll do the fallback, and if they say no, we'll just do the moratorium, right? So, so are we, are we done with the medical marijuana piece, or do we have to meet again?
I, I think you'd probably wanna see and, and find out what they decided.
I'd have to see it, yeah.
So if we have to do that anyway, we might have to have another quick meeting, anyway.
I mean, we can have a meeting in the office, um.
Last, last Thursday of January, the, one of that thirty-first?
Thirty-first, you, you could do that.
I think we're gonna have to, if we can't do the medical marijuana until we see it anyway, have a quick meeting to look at that language and look at this final.
You have to do, so you have to move the seventh to the fourteen.
That's gonna throw the hearing date off if you wait.
What if.
You're really gonna throw in an extra meeting.
Oh, oh, it's gotta be next week.
Meet next week.
Sure.
If you wanna keep everything else really on schedule.
Sure.
That's what we should do.
Of course, yeah, why not?
We'll have, we'll have a meeting next week.
Yeah, fine, fine.
Be a short meeting.
My, my mistake, I misspoke.
On the seventeenth, is that?
On the seventeenth?
Seventeenth, okay.
Mother's Day? Whose mother are you talking about?
That's what I thought I heard, was Mother's Day.
On the seventeenth, let me see.
That's right, yeah, you don't want.
Might have to go somewhere else, huh?
Oh, we will, because CBA meets here.
Karen's birthday on the thirty-first, we can't meet on the thirty-first.
We meet for an hour or something, and, so here's what town council said, here's the final language we discussed, and.
Yep, yep.
We will have had it before then, so.
We can do it, whatever.
Laura, the only other thing I had is an F.
F, okay.
The last, um.
Which F?
F of, uh, one, four, twenty, thirteen, so the one that doesn't have a whole lot of different colors.
Okay.
One without the whole color.
Yeah, yeah.
What section, Bob?
Are you getting with the lot on the house?
A lot on which house is located, blah, blah, blah. Just if, um, we might have to, uh, have more specific language than within the living and or sleeping area, uh, since we're talking about habitable areas based on Mass Code definition, blah, blah, blah. Just to make that, the wording there consistent with your definition of net square feet, if you know what I'm saying.
This is the one that serves the lot on which the house is located?
Yeah. Uh, look at the sentence right after the red sentence.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's it, you're right.
Instead of the living, sleeping, right, it just refers to the habitable, right, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and then also, she's gonna change, I think, everywhere where I use house. Right now, we're saying primary dwelling instead of house throughout the whole document.
Mm-hmm.
The other, the other question I had about this was this particular clause, was what if I wanna go up? Um, I haven't increased the footprint. Uh, obviously, I'm still gonna be within the zoning height restrictions, because I can't get a waiver from that. But I have increased the total square footage of the pre-existing structure.
Yeah.
You're, yeah, if you're, if you're going up in the part where you're, like, within the setback or whatever, you're gonna need a section six finding.
Yeah, you do. You can't just go up if you.
Okay, I can't just put a second floor on, even though I'm within the two and a half story.
No, because it's, it's, if you, if you expand the pre-existing non-conforming, you've gotta get a section six, so.
Okay.
It's not just foundational changes, it's any dimensional increase in size or.
Maybe what I'll do with that whole sentence is I can talk to Neil and find out.
Where it comes up a lot in the section six findings is people take an existing foundation, they scrape it, and they say, I'm building on the existing foundation.
Yeah, no, no, I, I got it.
They say, therefore, you're not increasing the non-conformity.
Yeah, I failed to read the pre-existing non-conforming, uh, language above that.
I can't imagine why.
Well, no, it's fine.
Okay, I, I was saying maybe I could talk to Neil Duggan about that, because he works with that, with the zoning board all the time, and just make sure I've got that right.
So in effect, what we've done is we've basically restored back so that now he can have it in all districts.
Yeah, with a separate structure.
Come back up and we can put definition to my subordinate.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Then we get rid of the years, and we increase the size.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we played around with the curb cut also, I think.
Yeah, we got rid of the curb cut restriction. Just leave that for special permit decision.
Basically decreased.
We're all in agreement under the, the.
Well, we increased the nominal size, but we.
What we did there is we really didn't make any change at all to what was existing before. I think the last meeting, we decided that, unless we spent more time really studying that. We just moved it to the section that belongs in.
No, no, the maximum size used to be seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Well, I, I, I think that's a good place for it.
Yeah.
You know, it's still a special permit.
Because it was the greater up.
It still has the up to three, and it has nine hundred square feet.
Which I thought was really odd. I mean, I remember the first time, just flat.
I think we'd sent the last board meeting to address that in detail would take a lot more time, so we just left it as is in the business district.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That works.
Okay, and then the affordable part is coming out, which, you know, doesn't really serve us.
Yeah, affordable part will just come out, because nobody uses it, and it's.
And the only time it's been used created a problem, because we did have a process for unaffordable.
Yes.
Okay.
Where is the affordable part?
It's gone.
Oh, so it's, it's not there anyway, okay. It's an invisible ink.
It already disappeared.
Put that up the other way, they wrote.
It was redundant because, you know, before you said you could do affordable, and here's all the millions of restrictions you have to have to comply with the affordable. And then the town passed one that says you can do non-affordable without any restrictions, so you're never gonna get an affordable application again.
Maybe that's how we got the affordable, only because it was more easier to get.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we, are ready to go to accounting?
So right now, we're, it's Thursday, January seventeenth, we'll have a short meeting.
Yeah.
I had one more.
Sustained coalition again.
I have one more, one more business question.
I do, too.
That's had to do with the follow-up on the.
Hillcrest Road.
Yeah, the weird thing that happened there.
Yeah, do I still need to write a letter?
No.
Okay.
Um, I talked with Neil. Neil has an issued a building permit for Hillcrest.
Cool.
Okay.
Oh, the one, um, whi- which one? Because there's, they are building the turnaround, by the way. The turnaround is, is on the ground.
He said if he issued a building permit, the turnaround would be part of.
Okay, well, the, the turnaround is down, because I got a complaint about trees being taken down up there, so I went up and looked, and.
They'd have to come back to us anyway, because it's not a legal lot right now, so, I mean, that's what we.
The guy across the street?
Yeah, the, um, this is.
Turnaround.
Yeah, I haven't looked.
This is the one where he, he came in and he was looking.
Yeah, I mean, Neil can't issue a building permit unless he comes back to us and gets a subdivision approval.
Right.
So that's where it stands.
And Bill's saying he hasn't.
It, when I talked to him, he hadn't issued the building permit.
Yeah, it doesn't matter if he builds a turnaround or not, he still has to come before our board, and when he came before, he didn't meet the requirements, so he said he was gonna resubmit, but.
Okay, maybe that builder was just full of smoke and mirrors.
How that stands.
Well, Neil needs to understand that, because, you know, they came in front of us for approval, and we turned them away.
I think they withdrew. They weren't denied.
No, they, they did withdraw, but.
They withdrew, and they were gonna resubmit.
But, but for, you know, Neil sent here. They, they can't go, they shouldn't be able to go around our board, because they didn't like the discussion we had with them and then go to Neil, um, because it's, it's a jurisdictional issue. Neil knows that it was in front of this board, so they come to us and don't like what they get, they can't then just go to Neil and pull a building permit, it doesn't work that way. And we determined from looking at all the law that they're not entitled to pull a building permit right now, so.
Then how do you rationalize the fact that the board voted for, or made additional lots on that street?
Well, we looked at that, and we, we looked at that, and we found that decision to be an error, actually. We looked at, we looked at all the case law, and we said we, when I looked, I said, I'm not sure that we should have done that. And I looked at all the case law, I looked at the, um, the A and R, uh, the A and R handbook, everything else pointed to that. It, the, the rule is that it doesn't just have to be a paper street, it has to be a street that actually existed and was built out before the time the subdivision regulation was adopted, and that's established through all of the case law. And there's been a few issues in town, actually, on that issue, with certain vacant lot close to my house, so. There's actually some case precedent in town for that as well, so we can't really stray from that, I mean, it is what the state law is and what the case law is, so. You know, the other one that was closer on Hillcrest, that was closer to the main street there, we issued one there, but I, you know, when I'm looking at it, I'm not, I'm not sure that we should have.
Yeah, we should, too.
Yeah, but those were a little bit different, though, too, because they actually abutted the paper street, too, this one, there's actually a gap where it is, and that actually had part of the gravel road abutting those, so there's a little bit different factually as well. But this one is a clear-cut case, looking at the case law, that they just don't comply. So we gave them, so we basically said, you know, you don't meet the qualifications for an A and R, what do you wanna do? Do you want us to deny you tonight, or you wanna come back and resubmit as a regular subdivision? And we said, we're not gonna put big hurdles in your way, but you've gotta go through the process. We're not gonna, you know, we didn't intend to put a whole bunch more requirements on them, but they've gotta meet the letter of the law. And they said, yeah, that's what we're gonna do, and then we, we don't hear from them for a month, and then Laura says they came in to get an address card, we're like, what?
There was something going on with that, that address, I don't know if I knew completely what it was, but that's what the builder said, he said he was, he had gotten his.
But we can't, we can't let builders go around us like that, I mean, that's ridiculous.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I agree with you, I mean, it just, yeah.
When I talked to Neil, he hadn't issued the building permit.
Okay, well, that's good.
Yeah, 'cause I think the, we, the last, wasn't the last meeting or the meeting before, we said that he had issued the building permit, correct?
Well, that's what we thought.
Those were the courts that we received.
That's what I, that's why I made a point telling you guys, because that's, you know, that's what the builder told me. So I, I don't know what happened.
And, and we, and I thought we had a, you know, the builder was not happy with the timing thing, but I thought we had a good conversation, and it seemed.
I was expecting him back first of the year, yeah.
Yeah, when we didn't see him at the next meeting.
So what recourse does he have?
Come back for subdivision approval.
He's gotta come back for us and resubmit for a subdivision approval.
Unless he has more evidence that says it was a pre-existing error.
We put the obligation to him, we said, we had a long discussion about it, I point out the cases, we went back and forth on it, said, you know, this is what the case law is, you don't qualify as an A and R, here's your option, you can come back in front, he said, okay. And we also said, usually on a gray area like this, you get a legal memo from an attorney, if you disagree with our opinion, you know, prove it, come back and show us, but otherwise, just submit as a regular subdivision, and, you know, you're gonna get approved, you, you know. So we were kinda shocked, I wondered when the next hearing, they didn't come back, I was thinking, whatever happened to those guys? And then Laura said, oh, they got their building permit, like, how is that possible?
Okay, well, I'm really glad to hear that they did.
Yeah, I'm too. So there's no issue there, then.
Move back to accounting?
Yes.
Uh, let's see, is this the same thing, or?
I'll read on schedule.
Okay. I move that we approve, uh, in the amount of two-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and thirty-nine cents to, um, where's, oh, Bills, I'm sorry, Bills and Thomas, um, Reservoir Corporation Center at Turnpike Road in Southborough, Mass, for engineering services and construction inspection for Dream World Estates. I think that's, that's it.
Second?
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes?
I just wanna, there's two sets of minutes, but you haven't really actually read the second set of minutes, they're in your folders.
That's on the executive session.
The executive session. Um, what happens under the new open meeting law, I mean, second set, we need minutes, so if you, I'm not allowed to send them via email, so that's why you have them in your folders, you don't wanna approve them tonight. You don't have to approve them tonight, but then, um, once they're approved, they get.
How long are they, can we just read them right now?
In the file until those pages freeze off. And at some point, forty thousand, they get, uh, you have to vote to issue them as public documents when the matter is all resolved. But we do have a sub twenty, but three minutes.
Can you give us two minutes, we'll do the.